Good afternoon. Welcome. Today is August 27, 2023, 1:00 PM. I'm going to call this meeting to order. I'm looking for two commissioners. Okay, thank you. And I appreciate you all coming out today. A little rusty, so bear with me. I am glad to be back and be here with my three colleagues. Thank you. I'll be glad to see Commissioner Davis be here. At this time, we're going to do the invocation, the pledge. And our clerk, of course, Angela Vick, will be doing our invocation. And our pledge will be done by First Lieutenant Chris Johnson of the U.S. Army. He was a first lieutenant there, and he served for six years. So if you're willing and able, please stand and join us for the pledge and invocation. Madam Clerk?
Would you bow with me this morning or this afternoon? Father, we come before you, ever mindful that you are Creator Lord. You are the same yesterday, today, and forever. And all that we do, Lord, is not a surprise to you. I ask for your guidance over today, your watch, care over what is done today. Lord, for clearness of vision and understanding for those that make decisions for the betterment of our community. For your special overshadowing over those that put theirself between us in harm every day, Lord. For those that serve here and in other countries, for the freedoms that we enjoy every day. We ask these things in the name of Jesus the risen Lord. Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, if you would please step forward.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it is a republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service. Madam Clerk, if you could do roll call, please.
This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners. It's 22nd day of August 2023. In attendance, Chairman Ruthie Schleba, Second Vice Chair Rebecca Bays, Commissioners Jeff Kennard and Diana Finnegan, County Administrator Steve Howard and County Attorney Denise Lynn.
Thank you. Board, we're at approval of agenda. And Mr. Howard, do we have any additions or deletions?
We do. We have a few. Additional item E14, improve four-littered crew positions as requested during the strategic planning retreat. Additional item G2, discussion and vote to change date and location of the 5:01 PM AA 2023-00003 Pigeon/Pine Ridge Golf Course Public Hearing from the September 12, 2023 BOCC Meeting to October 24, 2023, BOCC Meeting Location at the Inverness Courthouse. Additional item G3, discussion and vote on the right rudder FBO lease extension. Additional item G4, Florida Department of Emergency Management, FMA and BRIC, provide staff approval, submit the notice of interest form to the Florida Department of Emergency Management via email. Additional item E11, forfeiture fund request, updated budget transfer. Additional information, H4, stormwater correspondence from citizen concerning public hearing on stormwater fees. And the last item, additional information, T1, correspondence from citizen concerning clamp ground. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Board, what is your pleasure?
Madam Chair, motion approved, the agenda with changes, addition of E14, G2, G3, G4, E11, T1.
And H4.
H4? I missed that one.
Yes.
Include that one.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion by Commissioner Kennard and a second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any further board comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 4-0. Thank you. Okay, so consent, B.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to approve the consent agenda in its entirety, but I would like B7 to be removed for discussion, please.
B7.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Bays, with the remove, the pull of B7 for discussion. All in favor, any other board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 4-0. Thank you. So...
Ma'am, I'm sorry. Did you do open to the public on the consent?
No, I did not.
Do we?
Okay.
Is it on your...
It is not on here, but, um, so just... What are you doing?
I'm looking at the clerk. Looking at the clerk. Do we usually do open to the public on consent? I apologize.
Thank you. I should be the rusty one. Okay, but thank you for that, catching that. Okay, so we are going to go to B7, if that, right? Okay. Commissioner Finnegan.
Well, I wanted to discuss in our backup information under B7. You know, this was a contentious point that we voted on some time ago, and we felt like we owed it to the public to make sure we were doing our due diligence. And on page 275 of 1,776, it looks like an email to Elaine, actually, with the references that the person was supposed to file in, but there's notes beside some of them. I don't know that... So I guess my question was, did everyone get checked out? And then I guess I would ask Mr. Howard, did we validate it? Because I looked at our ordinance, and it says that you have to have reputable character references. And I don't want to mention the name because obviously I didn't have a date of birth, but I just did a Google search of some of them, and one, which I'm, it's not, it's not a common name, so I would assume that's probably the person. I mean, there's domestic violence charges, felony charges, and misdemeanor charges with battery on a police officer. So I don't, I don't know if these are reputable character references. And I wanted to know, am I off? Did we, did we check to make sure all of the references were reputable?
Mr. Howard?
I know staff did the best they could with the names that were provided. We also did the additional due diligence for the sheriff's office, background checks and things like that. I know Elaine actually, actually did talk to everybody, but, I mean, that's a broad-based word, you know, basically.
Yeah.
So we weren't actually doing background checks on the people that, oh, the references, are we Googling, things like that. But, you know, based on the best due diligence, I think, that our staff could do, that's what we could render the best we could. So I'm not sure, like, I know what you had looked at, but I think we did do our due diligence the best that we could at a staff level.
Well, yes, and I saw the, the background check for the person, and that was clear. Thank you for that. So, Board, I am going to not vote for this. I think that there were some questions that I had about how long the person's lived here. There was no change of address. It needed to be done. I think in one part it said over a year, and another part it's been since March. And I feel like the references, especially those in Citrus County, are a stretch and possibly not reputable, so I'm not going to vote for this.
Board, any other comments?
Waiting on a motion.
So is your motion...
I'll, I'll make a motion to deny B7.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Finnegan and a second by Commissioner Kennard to deny this application.
Chair?
Yes?
Is that A and B for B7?
Commissioner Finnegan?
No, A is to approve, B is to deny.
So is it then B7? Uh, B7B?
B7B, yes.
Or I could phrase it that I vote to approve B7B, which would be deny. I don't, how, how would we, how do you want to, okay.
Okay, so would you second what she just corrected, modified?
B7B?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Is there any public comment on B7? Okay, any further board comment? I would like to say, thank you for your comments. I, the one thing that concerned me, and it concerns me with all of the business license in this category, is every year they're supposed to file for Citrus County renewal business. And when I asked staff, anyone that has it now has not filed for a new business license. And I know every other business has to do that and pay their fee. So I am a little concerned with the present businesses that have had this business license but do not renew it. So I think that's something I would like to see staff look into.
We're going to follow up on that.
Thank you, sir. So, and thank you, Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any further board comment? Seeing none? Oh, Commissioner Bays?
Maybe we could just look at all business licenses. So if people are not actually renewing their licenses, but they're still operating as a business, that's how we fund economic development.
That's, that would be, that would be a, a lot of, a lot of work, but maybe we could take it by category and make that a goal for us. I, I would definitely, I like that idea.
Can I just ask you all the questions?
Yes, ma'am.
So, because we get business licenses, they come every year, we have to pay every year. Are you saying they're not being sent to all businesses, or that people are being sent, they're just not paying it, but they're continuing in their business?
Well, when I asked staff, because same situation, you get the, you get the bill, you then get the new certificate that you put up on your business wall, and they have not seen any come in for this category.
Odd.
So that's, um...
Good catch.
Thank you. So I appreciate what you brought up, so I think we need to get on that.
We will.
Yes, thank you. Okay, any further comments, Commissioner Davis?
I did find it rather odd that it's been, what, March to five months without electricity, without utilities on the backup? She claimed that she was waiting on a utility bill to change her address.
Oh, okay. Very good. Thank you.
And I picked right up on what we were talking about when I walked in, and my apologies for being late.
Thank you. Okay, so all in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes 5-0. Thank you. Madam Deputy Clerk, is, does, you, do you need, do I need to go back on any votes for Commissioner Davis?
We had a quorum, so that's totally up to you.
That's good. I just want to make sure.
She was not here.
I just want to make sure. Okay, so moving right along, we have proclamations and awards presentation, looking for a motion to approve the C1 and C2.
Motion to approve, I'm C1, C2.
Commissioner Kennard, I'm looking for a second. Commissioner Bays, is there any further board discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 5-0. Board, if you would mind joining me down front. Thank you.
Should stay down there.
And if the individuals representing National Preparedness Month would please come forward? Whereas National Preparedness Month, established by the Federal Emergency Management Agency in 2004, is an observance each September to raise awareness about the importance of preparing for disasters and emergencies that could happen at any time. And whereas the state of Florida is considered an all-hazard state, meaning we are susceptible to all forms of disasters, both natural and man-made, such as transportation incidents, severe thunderstorms, tornadoes, sinkholes, cyber attacks, and tropical weather events. And whereas emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every citizen of Citrus County, and all residents are urged to make preparedness a priority and work together. And whereas ensuring that our households, workplaces, schools, houses of worship, and community-based organizations are ready for any disaster which can reduce fatalities and economic devastation following a major crisis. And whereas Citrus County Sheriff's Emergency Management, Citrus County Board of County Commissioners, and other government agencies and emergency management partner organizations across the county are working to increase public awareness in preparing for emergencies and to encourage individuals to take action. Whereas we want to make Citrus County all hazards ready. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of September 2023 as National Preparedness Month in Citrus County, Florida, executed this 22nd day of August 2023.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Howard, thank you for recognizing National Preparedness Month. Obviously, we're focusing on hurricanes right now because we are in hurricane season, but we want everybody to remember that we are an all-hazard state. We can have transportation issues, we can have just severe thunderstorms, whatever it may be, wildfires. Everybody has to have a plan and be prepared. We really encourage people to do it. Back to hurricanes, though, I want to really focus on, we run from the water, we hide from the wind, and we cannot focus on the cone. Everybody gets really scope locked on that cone. And we have to remember that those are lines that are drawn where that storm could potentially go. But storm impacts, such as storm surge, high wind, flooding, inland flooding, all can occur outside the cone. So we ask everybody to be prepared and be ready and stay vigilant until at least the end of this year. But remember, we still are all hazards, so we always should have a plan. So thank you again for this recognition, and I want to thank our emergency management staff, Elaine Schneider, Amanda Spelacy for being here, and all of our, all of our CERT volunteers who came here today to support this, too. Thank you.
With those individuals representing the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, The Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, has presented the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners with their GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the 2223 fiscal year. There are over 17,000 participants in the Budget Awards Program. Award recipients have pioneered efforts to improve the quality of budgeting and provide an excellent example for other governments throughout North America. This award represents a significant achievement by Citrus County and reflects the commitment of the Department of Management and Budget to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. They have won this award more than 20 times.
I just wanted to say thank you real quick to the Management and Budget Team. It's not possible without them. I know they ran away quickly. Barbara Wilkum is our Assistant Management and Budget Director, Nicole Burns is our Budget Analyst, and Georgia Brock is also a Budget Analyst with our department. And we appreciate them so much, and we appreciate the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I open it up to the public, I do want us to be cognizant that we have quite a few time certens, and maybe, Ms. Amy, if you could remind me at 1:40. So at this time, I'm going to open it to the public. I ask that when you address the board, that you state your name and your address. You fill out a green card for the clerk. You have three minutes to speak unless you have a letter on file, and it's a registered group. All comments are directed to the chairman, and thank you for coming today. First speaker?
These are good commissioners that you can pass come forward. Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Sabrina Watson-Lacanto. First of all, I want to say thank you to, or welcome back, to Commissioner Schleba. I know you'll do good on your battle.
Thank you so much.
All right, so I'll be speaking for the Exceptional Life Project today. I'd like five minutes, please. I have handed each of you a handout with a picture on it. I don't know if that picture can actually be put on the screen. I don't know if that's a possibility. I want to talk about a post that I found on Facebook recently. As you know, I've been here a lot talking about the FWC. As of on 18, 8/17/22, there was a post on Facebook with this photo, actually a video, that accompanies it, and it says, "They completely nuked the river on Thursday." I mean, they are spraying a heavy, hot-ass mix. "He came back today video to apparently nuke what he missed on Thursday and sprayed our little moat around the island. The river looked like absolute death when we went out in the boat Friday evening. They left zero cover, shade, cover or shade for the fish. The sound of frogs at night declined by 80%. What do you suppose happened to any dragonfly eggs on that vegetation innocently waiting to hatch into nymphs and go into the river? Or the nymphs that had emerged from the river and were on those plants becoming adult dragonflies? How about that poison I'm sure is all over my boat, or the shit that was carried up in the strong westerly winds?"
Ms. Watson, could you please watch your language?
I'm just reading it.
Okay, well, just leave that out.
Okay, I'll, I'll edit that out for you. "My dogs were sniffing with their noses in the air while he sprayed. There were absolutely no vegetation navigational issues on the river, only a few feet of vegetation on each side of the banks that are now nuked and sinking with 60 to 80 feet of open water in between. It's not a barge canal or a river with dug channels for yachts. It's a shallow river that has again been heavily poisoned." There's also a photo there now that the FWC, the illegitimate, illegal, criminal FWC is put on their website that says, "Attention due to safety concerns regarding staff contractors. Public posting of the schedule of operations is paused until further notice." What that really means is they're getting caught. So let's talk about the boats that are actually in the water. The next post, on this particular post, is that an aluminum boat? "One of the primary herbicides used by Citrus Aquatic is dichotidromide. Labels state that dichotidromide causes an absolutely deadly gas when it comes in contact with aluminum. Also, the acidic nature eats fiberglass. I would definitely pull and wash my boat and contact Mark Edwards, Director of Citrus Aquatics, to find out what was used, since FWC will no longer post schedule or operation for aquatic plant management." Meanwhile, another comment on the same post, "Meanwhile, Too Far is accepting bids for their $4 million taxpayer-funded 20-acre lake restoration project, a project that likely wouldn't be necessary had they not formed their nonprofit environmental group and had the Wyngsong Dam rebuilt. I'm most certain the reasoning behind the recent river nuke will be risk of rising waters, vegetation breaking loose and clogging dams downstream in Inglis. One of the reasons they are expecting the river to rise is because they've been stacking it behind the Wyngsong Dam to try to top the lakes up, just in time for peak tropical storm and hurricane season. If, when the time comes, they will frantically dump the top lakes and the river they have stacked behind the Wyngsong Dam onto the river simultaneously, and bam, welcome to a whole bunch of wrongs never made right." Hmm, Mr. "One rake at a time" and Lone Supporter, another comment, "Of the Northern Turnpike Extension got his taxpayer-funded racket band-aid grant as well. I'm all for restoration, however, when handing out the spending, our tax dollars for restoration, it would be nice if everyone looked at the entire picture rather than just a fraction of it. When you are considering a house restoration, you look at everything, not just the exterior." What the H, "I just filmed the river from the injection point on Lake Rousseau, Canal C to Denellen that got completely hammered by four spray boats from Applied Aquatics last week of June." Just want to let people know that on September 9, I will be at the event that's happening at the fairgrounds with documents that people can sign to once again ask these commissioners to stop this contract. Oh, and also, for the person who reached out to me and asked for the audio from Citrus Springs last year, I want to let you know I've located it, and we'll get that information to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Oh, Ms. Watson, did you fill out a green card? Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is DeeDee Hedley, and I live at 4433 East Maryland in IV4. As you know, rainy season is here, and I have vast conditions on the condition of the roads in IV4. How can the county have allowed these roads to be cut and stone to be placed without an ERP permit from Swift Mud? The residents are now faced with roads that cannot be touched, even though there are now places that are impassable. The corner of Walker and Cunningham has a deep gouge, which is only marked by an orange cone. At the corner of Taper and Cunningham, there's a vast hold that, when it fills with water, any normal car could get trapped in it. Garden Street was cleared out within the last year. Why did the county not stop construction when this first started? And then why has it been allowed to happen again in this last year? These are county-owned public roads. The county has been supplied with information on who cut these roads, and if there's any questions about who touched the roads, I might recommend that the county reach out to Swift Mud, because they seem to know who did. I also sent this letter to commission meetings ago, because on the website, it said I could submit my comments via that avenue. Ms. Doug Wright responded to me and saying that that was no longer correct. Well, there are many of us that have to work on a daily basis, and there are a lot of us snowbirds. We're continually being told that we're not represented because we don't come. And I have not heard from any of the commissioners as to the regard to this letter that I sent to commissioners ago that Doug Wright assured me was going to be passed on. I would also like to take the time, since time is short, to ask anybody who is here from IV4 to either raise their hand or stand up.
Ma'am, you have to just address the...
So, we're here.
I see you.
We're listening, and we just would appreciate a little bit more leniency, especially when it's concerned to snowbirds and people who have to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Thayla Rice. I live at 4501 East Ravanna in Inverness Villages 4. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I know that not all the present commissioners was involved initially in Inverness Villages 4. Some of you came in late, like I did. But I feel that some of the previous commissioners have been complicit in the drainage retention and road challenges. After some time, I noticed that there was no retention ponds, and so I called the county in August of 2021, and I asked if they would issue building permits if there wasn't retention and drainage in place. And the lady seemed surprised, I believe her name was Amber, and she seemed surprised that there was even this many homes being built. She said, "Is there more?"
Veronica.
"Ten or 15?" And, of course, you know, there's hundreds. Anyway, she assured me that they would not issue building permits if there wasn't retention and drainage in place. When I purchased my home, Chris from Vanderwalk said that he would have it built in six months, but it might even be seven. It took about that long for him to get the permit applied for. In October, when my permit was finally approved, this is of 2021, I assumed that, like most normal people would, that the drainage and the retention challenges had been resolved. This is the 14th home that I've owned in four different states, two new builds, and I have never run into such, I've always dealt with reputable people in the past, and they did what they were expected to do and what was acceptable. I've never ran into such a mess as this in any state. And it seems even Swift Mud was surprised that this county would allow this. I have attended meetings here in the, here in this building here, as well as in the county building, and also at the sales office and at Whispering Pines. And back in the wintertime, I spoke with Ms. Holly Davis, who's been really trying to assist us to getting this thing resolved. She's really done a great job, I think. But apart from that, my youngest son, and this is what I was telling her, he was facing his fifth brain surgery for a busted aneurysm. When he went in to have that surgery, I was telling her I didn't think I'd be able to make these meetings for a little while, since I had two great-grandchildren to take care of during this time, one of them a special needs child. So in this last spring surgery he had of January 31st this year, he had a second aneurysm burst on the way out of the surgery. And so what happened was that he was given a 2% chance of survival initially, and then he, they said if he lived, he would be a vegetable. But he's alive, thank God. And several of the neighbors on my street have dealt with death in the family, strokes, cancer. So just because that we have not attended every one of these bi-monthly meetings doesn't mean that we're not concerned about what you're doing.
And ma'am, ma'am, your time ran out, but I didn't want to cut you off, but thank you so much.
Okay. Well, can I just tell you that the mail lady got stuck on the road today, just a few minutes before this meeting?
Yes, ma'am, and thank you. And did you fill out a green card? Thank you, ma'am. And if you could please pay attention... And if you could please pay attention to the time, because I hate cutting somebody off, but my Emily Post inside does not like doing that. So thank you, welcome.
Welcome. I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
My name is Dr. Carmen Kubichak, forty-five twelve East Maryland Street, Inverness. I'm glad to see you, Commissioner. I do want to say thank you to Holly Davis and to the rest of the commissioners, because I know you all are working really hard. I want to remind the residents of Inverness that even though they don't attend the meetings, the meetings are online and they can look at it, along with SWIFTMUD. We also had sent numerous emails to the residents, some of which responded, others which I don't know what was going on. I think maybe they were like an ostrich had their head buried, and once they realized how bad the roads are when they started living there is when they took enough interest. The question that I have for you all is, I know that we're going to be getting an assessment in October. How would you let us know what that assessment is it going to be? Is it going to be in a board meeting? Will we be getting something in the mail? Those are the questions I have. And I still would like to see if you have a workshop for all of us, so that we all can be on board. Thank you all.
Thank you, doctor.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, welcome.
My name is Linda McMahon. I live at forty-four seventy-seven East Ravenna Street in Inverness Village Four subdivision. Along with about a hundred-plus homeowners in that subdivision, we are all very concerned about the roads, the infrastructure, the lack of. I truly hope that the county now realizes the importance of what needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Once again, my name is Chris Johnson. I represent my wife and I, Karen Johnson, and guess what I'm here for in Inverness Village Four. I'm not quite sure if anything I have to say is going to make a difference, if it hasn't already been said, but I'm here to speak my part. I'm not here to speak negatively about any particular person or entity, I'm just here to share what's on my mind. However, I am here to call out the injustices that we as homeowners have had to deal with, with the mess that we have been faced with. As a commission officer, I had to swear an oath that I would defend and protect the Constitution of the United States of America, both foreign and domestic. I didn't have a choice who I could choose to defend. I didn't have a choice if I had to not to defend. If the President of the United States said do, I had to obey that order. As a child of God, I'm not concerned about what's going to take place, because my father has promised that he would take care of me. But I am here on behalf of the residents that may not have faith like I do, or may not understand the options that they have. And just as I, as a commission officer, had to take an oath, I'm assuming that you commissioners had to take an oath as well. That oath, I'm quite sure, included taking care of the residents, not only in your district, but the county itself. So I take exception when I hear a commissioner say, "My constituents are asking, why are we getting involved in this?" I hope the response was, "They're citizens just like you are. They pay taxes just like you do, and they deserve the same necessities as you do." So I took exception to that, because as commissioners of this county, you have a great responsibility, and just like if anything took place under my command, guess what? The buck stops with me. So commissioners, the buck stops with you. There's a great deal of responsibility that you have, and I'm asking you to step up to the plate and live up to that responsibility. There's going to be another exception that I took, too, is something to the effect of homeowners and their decisions not being wise or something like that. I don't know. Commission officer, United States military, multiple degrees, I would consider myself somewhat wise. What's unwise is how the county allowed this mess to take place. We should not be in this position. So what I have to put forth is... Okay.
Sir, if you could just wrap it up really fast.
Okay, all right. The bulk of the matter is, this shouldn't have happened. This should have been taken care of long ago. We as homeowners should not have to pay more than what we were told to pay. So I'm praying that you would go back, look at how the county has failed us as citizens, as constituents of your various districts, and act accordingly.
Thank you, sir. I'm not dismissing that, but please be respectful of those around you, and please no clapping. Thank you.
I grew short. May someone please point out to me Mrs. Baze. Mrs. Baze, I'm Rose Leonardis. I've called many times the last two years to speak with you, but I never received a return to call. And I must say that Mr. Kennard is guilty also for that, for not returning my call. I do appreciate some respect. Please. I do know where I stand. I've been a resident, a taxpayer of Inverness for forty-two years. And my complaint is now that I've been ignored. My property is depreciating because no one is here to help me. People around me are doing things to destroy my property. First of all, there's one thing I would appreciate. I would like to know, what is the law about a vacant lot? A sixty-five foot wide by a hundred and three feet deep? Is that still, is that a county law or is that a state law, that it doesn't need to be, the owner has no responsibility of the care? They don't have to care to keep it in good care? Is it a county? Is it county? Are you Mr. Howard?
Yeah, Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Yes. We will answer your questions when the rest of the people have spoken. So do you have?
You will.
Yes, ma'am. And do you have any other questions?
Well, I do have a lot of questions. As I said, I've been here for forty-two years. Twenty years of that was a winter resident. Mr. Kennardy, Kennard, was it? He was to speak with me about other problems, the storm water, and residents in the area running their water from their gutters into my property, washing off the top soil, and now my foundation is higher than the ground. I thank you so much. I don't mean to be a complainer, but I'm ninety-nine years old and I'm alone. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. And Ms. Rose, I just want to say one thing. Commissioner Baze has only been in office for eight months, so you might have been...
Oh, was it?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know. Listen, excuse me, I lose track of time.
And I understand, and we will answer your questions, and I know I have spoken on the phone with you, so I do appreciate your time.
No, I never spoke to a commissioner.
I actually spoke to you about two years ago.
You did?
Yes, ma'am. But thank you.
In regard to what?
To some of your problems and the neighbors', and we'll address that when you're done. But thank you for coming. Have a seat in the front row, you deserve it.
Yes, well, I came purposely to see Mrs. Baze.
She's right here. She will not, she will call you back, Ms. Rose.
I want to know what your fountain of youth is.
I just got to have someone to answer my questions.
Well, I'll have Veronica get with you and get your phone number, because I don't...
Listen, I'm well. I do know all the answers to the zoning. My husband was a builder, my son is an architect, and I know everything. But it isn't that, it's what we do here is important.
Can you get with Veronica right here and give her your contact information, and I will get with you?
Okay.
Have a seat, Ms. Rose.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair, it is past one forty.
Okay, thank you. At this time, if you can note where you are in line, we are going to our time certance, and we will get back to you. If you guys should just remember what order you're in, I would appreciate that. Thank you. And Ms. Rose, if you want to have a seat in the front row? Okay, at this time, we have H one, a public hearing for proposed change to transit service deviation, deviated fixed routes. Mr. Head.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, here are Ked, Community Services Director. This is for restoring the Homasasa route of the deviated fixed route, and at this time, I'd like to call up Ms. Joanne Granger, our Transit Services Director, to just do a brief presentation on the details of adding that route, restoring that route back to Homasasa.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Hi, Joanne.
How are is everybody? All right, this is our presentation to bring back the Homasasa route.
Can I go whoop-whoop?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Little nervous. Basically, we're reinstating the Homasasa fixed route because there is an increased demand for services within the Homasasa area. And then the increased demand is also impacting because a lot of residents from Homasasa are looking to go across county to La Canto, to Inverness. Homasasa also has several areas of a high poverty level. There's that need for transportation to work, doctors, shopping, pharmacies. The Crystal River route is no longer sufficient to cover the west side. It's difficult to cover both north and south of Nineteen. We go as far south right now with Crystal River to the Homasasa Wind Dixie, and then as far north as the Seven Rivers Hospital. And there also is some development happening around the Crystal River malls, and then the Crystal River also goes as far as the La Canto Walmart. So it's becoming very difficult to provide the transportation in Homasasa. This is our current route system now. We have four routes, Crystal River, Beverly Hills, Hernando, and Floral City. And this is what we're proposing with adding the Homasasa route, which is in yellow, that also has both east and west covered, as well as the center of the county, where before Homasasa was all by itself. And that's it.
Thank you, Joanne. I know you've, we've been working on this for a long time.
Yes.
And I appreciate that. Commissioners, any comments?
Thank you. I'll just say thank you for Homasasa.
Okay, I'm... Yes, ma'am, I'm looking for, I'm actually looking for a motion on H one. The public hearing first, excuse me, I'm so sorry. I'll get it together. Would anybody like to speak at this time? We're going to open it to the public hearing portion. Thank you. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Elizabeth of Colorado. You would address me as Liz. I'm a resident at Homasasa, and I use the transit. I want to begin by thanking you for finally giving us the floor to address our concerns. After my truck broke down in June twenty-twenty-one, because of the Citrus County Transit, I've been able to go to work. I have been using the blue transit line. I want to thank the private transit drivers, starting with John Laurie, Angel. Oh, Laurie's not a driver, but Angel, Addie, Rosie, Kathy, and Bill. I want to thank the people from the Orange Line. I want to do this first before I get into what I need. The past three weeks, I have been using the Orange Line, and Joseph, Joe, Norm, and Louis have been transporting me and assisting me and doing everything I need to do and get all the resources, use all the resources that we have here in Citrus County. And yet, I accomplish a lot, yet I can't accomplish more by feeling independent and not to be burdened to my friends and family. Most of my friends and family can't help me normally the week, and that's where, of course, you know, the transit runs at that time. The blue line is perfect for fixed schedules, like if I have to go to work, they take me to work from eight to three, pick me up, boom, no problem. Doctor's appointments, no problem. So like I said, I live in Homasasa, I live between Green Acres and South Suffolk. That's below Grovet Cleveland, and I'm not sure how many people know about Homasasa. And the Orange Line only goes up to Wind Dixie, and that's Homasasa trip. So I have to ride my bike, like a mile and point four, to get to Wind Dixie, and they do at seven o'clock in the morning, so I usually leave at six-thirty, case I get a flat, tie my bike up, you can walk in, you know. Okay, and then...
Liz, you got twenty seconds left.
All right. With the Homasasa route, I would accomplish my daily errands, doctor's appointments, interviews, resources. At this time, it's taken me two to three weeks just to do that on the Orange Line. My last plea, and that's to your consideration, is having the Orange Line in Homasasa. That's pretty much it. In conclusion, I again thank you and for allowing me to share my reasons, and that we pushed the Homasasa forward, so let's roll and get this bus on the road.
Thank you, Liz, and please fill out a green card for the clerk. Thank you for your time. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on H one, public transportation? Please step forward.
My name is Heather, and I would hope that you, I'm from Hernando, and I hope that you are going to approve the Homasasa route. It would help people, I see people every day that are super disadvantaged. This is what the bus is for, it's not to make money, it's to help the disadvantaged, the disabled, the elderly, and it's for safety. If you've ever tried to ride your bike on Nineteen, you've seen in the news, people get hit by cars, so if you can just expand it so that people can get where they need to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Next speaker on H one.
Hello, my name is Eva Petrofsky, and I'm from Beverly Hills, and I think it's urgent that you improve the transit system, especially now that we're getting so many people coming down from the north, and we're getting all those new shopping centers everywhere. It is urgent that we get more transportation and more frequent transportation. Thank you.
Eva, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on H one? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing portion of H one. Board, I'm... Board, I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve H1.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Cannard. Is there any other?
Chair, is that A and B?
Of course it's A.
It's just, well, it's B because we just did the.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Thank you.
There is, there's not a C on my agenda.
I don't see a C.
You're, you're right.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, is there any public comment?
You just made public.
I just did the public hearing. Thank you. Any further board comment?
I'll just.
Commissioner Bayes.
Thank you. It's funny how things work out. This morning, we had a meeting in my office for probably over an hour and met with the judge and some other people talking about this very issue of making sure that we can have these transportation for people that are disadvantaged. Sometimes in the court system, we need folks to be able to either get to medical appointments or get to jobs or do the things that are in compliance with whatever their court orders are. So this is, this is spot on. Timing's perfect. Love to hear it. And I think the comments that have been made by the public are truly, we need to make sure that we can expand this and maybe even look at some weekend hours and expanding some of the hours so that people can get to work.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
I, I am fully in support of this and overjoyed that it's being reinstated. And through all the work with the Chamber and Prosperity Citrus, transportation is the one root cause of poverty that we are virtually dead in the water in, in Citrus County because we're such a big county and we just don't have the transit lines. So look forward to getting that grown more in the future.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan? Anything? Commissioner Cannard?
No.
Thank you. Joanna, thank you. Maricel. Been on this board since I was elected in 2020. Don't tell any other boards. It's my favorite board. We have worked on this together since 2020, and I don't know, I've said it before, I said it in 2021, and I was kind of laughed at when they wanted to get rid of the Orange Line, but it is very important in your district. And, you know, study after study, you know, I'm looking at my notes that say poor transit access leads to fewer job opportunities. And this is where your federal dollars are really going to work for us in this county. So, thank you. I support this, as you know, wholeheartedly, and I appreciate the motion and the second by my colleagues, so thank you. Don't believe there's any other comments. So at this time, all in favor of the proposed changes to the transit service deviated fixed route. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 5-0. Again, whoop-whoop. Thank you. Okay, H2, time certain, 1:45, conduct a public hearing to consider imposition of the proposed 2023 property abatement assessments, A, B, and C. Yep, it will. No, I need the help, so you keep doing what you're doing. I'm a little rusty. So Carl, welcome.
Hello, Commissioners. Carlton Hall, interim Public Works Director. So H2 is to conduct this public hearing in reference to imposition of a proposed 2023 property abatement assessment. So what we're asking for is relating to the provisions of property abatement services. It's describing the method in which we assess property abatement service costs against assessed properties located in Citrus County.
Thank you. And and this is a housekeeping item that we do every year. Thank you. Any questions for Carl? Board? Seeing none, I'm going to open the public hearing portion of H2. Would anybody like to speak about H2? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion. Board, I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Bayes, that's, is B and C? Commissioner Bayes? Yes, I have a motion for H2B and C by Commissioner Bayes, a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any further board comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 5-0. Thank you. H3.
Ken Cheek will come forward, please.
This is to conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed imposition of utility availability assessment for fiscal year 2023 and 2024.
Yes, Chair, Board members. Ken Cheek, Water Resources Director. This is our annual assessment for maintenance of utility lines adjacent to vacant properties. We're not proposing any change for this year.
Thank you. Any comments from Mr. Cheek? Thank you, sir. I'm going to open this to the public hearing portion of H3. Would anyone like to speak? Going once, going twice, and I'm going to close the public hearing portion. And Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve H3B. Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Bayes, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any additional board comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 5-0. H4. Conduct a public hearing to consider the proposed reimposing of the stormwater MSBU for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Mr. Hall?
Commissioners, so this would be a resolution to provide stormwater management services, as we have in the past, for assessed properties within Citrus County. So this is the same as we had in the previous years, no increase.
Thank you. Board, do you have any questions for Mr. Hall?
Just have one, and I would like to get this information of how much we use. As you know, I was not, I did not support the stormwater, especially at the 100% because I didn't think we were going to be doing 100%. I know it's necessary. It's regulated by the state. We have to have this in order. But I want to make sure, if we're collecting 100% of this tax, I want to make sure we're spending 100% of this tax. So I would like to know where we're at, and I didn't have the opportunity to give you a warning that I wanted that, so if you could, please get that to me.
Absolutely.
And to the rest of the board, please.
Sure, I'll provide a copy for each.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing portion of H4. Would anyone like to speak? Would you like to come forward and speak? You would be, you have to give your name and where you're from. I'll wait for you. Anybody else, if you're interested in speaking on this, please step forward. Welcome.
Claudia Loak with La Cooche Trail.
Thank you.
I don't receive county services. I'm on public, I'm on private septic and private sewer. And I should not be assessed any kind of taxes on stormwater.
Thank you. And would you please fill out a green card if you haven't already?
So how can I go about it? Because I will, I will take this higher up if I have to.
Yes. I'm going to, what I'm going to do is let, I see there's a couple more people that want to speak on this, and then I'm going to talk to Mr. Howard and get you the information.
Okay.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mary Seeder.
Hi, Mary. Welcome.
Hi, how are you? I'm also on, like her, I'm county. And I don't even have water roll-off when it rains on my property. I don't understand why I have to pay extra $58 every year. I think that's not right to tax other people for other things.
Are you on a private road, Mary?
I think so, because I'm, the only house on a dead-end street is East Side Court.
Well, we'll find out.
And, and there's no other houses.
Well, you can still have only one house on a public road, so, or a private road, so we'll.
I'm going to come and see you.
We'll find out. Thank you.
Okay.
Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Sabrina again. I just, you asked a question about how much of this money has actually been spent on what? My question is, will we actually get that answer before this is voted on today? Or is this going to be like, we vote on it, and then maybe we get the answer next week, or maybe we never get the answer? Additionally, I think it's important for people in this room to know that this MSBU is also being funneled other places, not just taking care of stormwater issues. It has been laundered, shall we say, to Crystal River to help with the waterway cleanup after the illegal illegitimate criminal organization FWC sprays the area. So just want to make sure people know how this circle works. We spray the area, then we take money from stormwater to pretend to clean up the area, and then we spray it again. You were probably given none of this information, though, when you got the information for the MSBU. You weren't told it would be going other places. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on H4? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion of this. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
Motion approved, item H4, A and B. All right, second.
A motion by Commissioner Cannard, a second by Commissioner Davis. Board, is there anyone that would like to make a comment? Commissioner Finnegan?
Thank you. Probably better coming from Mr. Howard or staff, but for the people that even live on private roads, it's my understanding that they pay it because we all travel on county roads. So it's not just the property that you live in, it's everywhere else. We all travel in the county. But I don't know if Madam Chair, you would like someone from the county to bring, to answer some of these questions better.
I, I think you said it very well. And, but if you, would you like to address Commissioner Finnegan?
So the assessment is to every citizen in the Citrus County, and it's for the entire county, the benefit of the whole county, not just one neighborhood or one road.
Okay, thank you. Board, is there any other comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Davis?
I put together, I've been hammering on this topic for two and a half years now, the need for graphics to, with numbers to show in one sheet what we do with taxpayer money and invest it. And that made the list that I submitted to Mr. Howard and Veronica, both. So stormwater is really high up on my list because that's a mystery tax. People don't know where it goes, per se. But if we didn't do it, if we weren't investing it correctly, you would know it, because all the roads would be flooded, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would just add transparency is a beautiful thing, especially in government.
And I'm just going to say that even though I know that stormwater is important and that we all use the roads, I'm not going to support this because I didn't get enough information. I have always been against this from the beginning because of transparency. We have a new captain at the helm, so I hope you hear us that we would, I definitely want more information and where these money, these dollars are going to. So that's all I have to say. So next, next time, if we don't have a graph at our transparency or what there is, I'm just going to keep voting against things.
We're aggressively working on a new communications plan that will be all those things you, you're talking more.
Thank you. Commissioner Bayes?
Well, I am going to go on the record. I wasn't going to say anything, but I am going to say it. I understand that we're doing these, this stormwater MSBU, but where I think the county is, has gone down the wrong path. Back in 2012, 13, when 491 was first being designed, we had master stormwater drainage. And if this county really wants to claim and put at stake to saying that we are the environmentally sensitive area that we are, then we better get very serious about master stormwater drainage. Every commercial piece of property that you see up and down a commercial corridor, there is a cut in it for drainage. If we were doing this correctly on how we would get our recharge to our aquifer, we would have master drainage. And all those commercial pieces of property that have those independent drainage on them, those would be more buildable, and they would be more on your tax rolls. So the way we're going about this is kind of backwards, in my opinion. We need to start planning better for the future. And I think of the master drainage is the key to where we need to go in this community, especially with all this development on the forefront. I had originally put on the agenda some time back about putting together a master corridor list for the, the transportation networks that are going to be needed with the development that's being proposed or that has been approved. I think this is something, I talked about it with staff, we need to have an overlay. It's not just the expansion of the, the transportation network, but we need to start talking about the stormwater. We needed to be talking about the utilities and where we're going as a master plan, not piecemeal.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan?
I just wanted to ask all of you if we would want to give the staff a little time and not vote on this, maybe, until the end? And just give them, I don't have the list memorized, but in our budget, I remember seeing, this past budget, the list of projects that fell under stormwater. So it seems like that should be very easy information to come forward before we vote.
Mr. Cannard?
Building infrastructure, as Commissioner Bayes was, was referring to, larger infrastructure, a master plan for infrastructure, which includes stormwater management, and then the maintenance of the, of those infrastructure projects is not optional. That's part of the very foundation, the very basics of what we're responsible for. If we're going to get wrapped around the axle about every, every funding mechanism for these projects, we're going to be here a very, very long time, and I believe not, not doing the, the business of the county. This is our responsibility to take care of these things. This is not something new that's being put into place. Is there, is there room for greater transparency? 100%. And we need to do a better job of informing the public. And that's something that I think is coming. I think that it will be there. But I'd like for us to get this, get this passed, get moving on other stuff that's before us today. This is, again, this is, this is something that is, that is needed to take care of projects and some new stuff that's required for a federal permit. I'm not going to even attempt what the, the abbreviation for that permit is. But anyway, the new, new requirements that were put on the county to renew that permit.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Cannard, a second by Commissioner Davis. We've opened it to the public and to the board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Nay. That passes 4-1. Thank you. H5. This is to conduct, conduct a public hearing to reimpose the fire protection assessment and adopt the annual rate resolution for fiscal 2023, 2024. Is this going to be you?
It may be.
Mr. Hall, thank you.
So as you mentioned, this is also a reimpose of the existing fire protection assessment for the 2023, 2024 year. There are no increases. We do have a rate study going on now that may change things in the future, but as for right now, this is no increase.
Thank you. Any comments? Any questions, Commissioner? None? Okay, I'm going to open this up for the public. Public hearing portion to reimpose the fire protection assessment. Would anyone like to speak on H5? Going once, going twice. I'm going to close the public portion. Public hearing portion, Commissioners?
Chair, motion to approve HB.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Bayes. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Commissioner Cannard first, thank you. Is there any other public board comment? Excuse me. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 5-0. H6. This is, conduct a public hearing to certify the non-ad valorem assessment rules for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Mr. Hall?
So this is also no increase for this year, but what the non-ad valorem assessment rules take care of would be street lighting, neighborhood beautification, roadway maintenance improvements, water and wastewater assessments, and various areas of the county.
Thank you, sir. Board, any questions? Seeing none, I'm going to open up the public hearing portion for H6. Would anyone like to speak on H? Would anyone like to speak on H6? Going once, going twice. I'm going to close the public hearing portion. Board, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve H6B.
Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any further board comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. H7. This is a time certain for public hearing, solid waste management fees and assessment rates for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Mr. Hall?
So, on this assessment, there will be increases. We have a 10% increase across the board. And at the same time, we're also looking to implement a one-stop shop for the passes, the yearly passes to bring trash in. We're going to take everything that was on a regular citizen rate and also a senior citizen rate and bring those to $160 a year. That would allow 52 drop-offs per year, eight bags each drop-off. And the reason for the increase basically is for the upgrades that we've made at Solid Waste. We've installed a second scale. We've also installed an RFID reader that would allow citizens, also haulers, to come in and separate from the first scale that we have to be able to go through their own scale without having to interact with staff. It would allow them to pick up a reader that's inside of their vehicle. It would not only allow them access, but it would log each trip that they make to the Solid Waste. Those increases were about a half a million dollars.
Thank you. Excuse me.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Does that mean the lines are going to get shorter?
Absolutely.
There you go. For residents as well?
Yes.
Good.
Thank you. Board, any, Commissioner Cunard?
If the increase in these annual passes to cover this new expedited system that's been installed, seems to me that that would be more efficient in years two, three, and four, and so forth. Once the, the expense of installing these things is recovered, can we not look at decreasing these costs again because the county would be saving much?
Sure. Yeah, we'll look at it each and every year. I know that in October, we're going to give a presentation of the Solid Waste facility itself, what its future hopes are, and what it's going to take to get us there. So, I know that once this is assessed, that won't be in a change for the next five years in those passes to help recoup this fund. But then again, each and every year, we're going to reassess it.
So, the, the expectation it's going to take five years at this current annual pass fee to recoup the half a million dollars?
Correct.
So, this increase is increasing the revenue from those passes roughly $100,000 a year? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, one other thing?
Commissioner Davis?
Just for, speaking of transparency, would you explain for just public dissemination that this is an enterprise fund and what that means?
Correct. So, Solid Waste collects funds, each and every person that brings trash in. So, those funds are used to run Solid Waste itself. They actually take care of their own fees, anything that has to do with labor or any expenses there at Solid Waste are paid for by the fees that they collect. And we're in hopes that with the changes that we bring to you in October, you'll see the future of Solid Waste and what it's going to take to continue that course.
So, essentially, the budget zeros out at the end. Whatever is paid in is what the exact expenses are.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Howard?
There is some cost savings with the pass, correct?
Absolutely. If, if they were to bring the trash in as a regular customer without the pass, it would be $260 a year for that many trips. So, it is $100 a year savings to do the pass. And also, we did some research, there are no other counties offering a pass for Solid Waste.
Thank you. Seeing none, and no further questions, I'm going to open this up to the public. Would anyone from the public like to speak during this public hearing? Hello?
Hi, just a quick question. Is there not going to be a discount for seniors anymore? Is it going to be equal to everybody else?
Madam Chair?
You need to state your name and where you live.
Oh, sorry.
Terry O'Mara, IV4.
Thank you. Any further comments during this public hearing? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing portion. Board, what is your pleasure for H7?
Motion to approve.
The motion by-
H7B.
Commissioner Bayes, second by Commissioner Cunard. Is there any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. We are at... That's H7. H8. This is a time certain to conduct a public hearing to reimpose annual disposal assessments and adopt the solid waste residential assessment role for fiscal year 2023, 24. Mr. Hall?
So, this is also an assessment that is being reimposed. It is no increase to the citizens of Citrus County, and this is the collection of funds to be able to run Solid Waste itself.
Thank you. Board, do you have any questions for Mr. Hall? Commissioner Cunard? Okay, thank you, sir. I'm going to open up the public hearing portion for H8. Would anyone like to speak? Going once, going twice. I'm going to close the public hearing portion of H8. Board, what is your pleasure on H8?
Motion approved, item H8B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Cunard, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any further board comment? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five zero. I believe that is our last time certain, so we're going to go back to open to the public at this time. Let's see where I am. Okay. Amy, first in line. Thank you for your patience.
Hello, my name is Carla Boone. I live at 5260 Smoky Mountain Point, Crystal River, and I've given you some pictures of our road, the damage that was done by a log truck. And respectfully, most of this does not apply to Dr. Cunard. We've collectively raised many, money to repair Gum Street. Smoky Mountain Point is the farthest back off gum. Recently, they've been clearing land north of Smokey, on Smokey. My estimation, five to 10 acres. You're talking about water runoff, that'll cause it. Log trucks are smashing our roads. To my south, two or three lots are being clear cut with the same outcome. We, we spent money to keep our roads safe. I've been insulted by BOCC every time I've addressed this problem. If it's a state law, it should be changed by the state. Vacant land is being sold for development at a very high rate. A policy needs to be implemented to prepare for the county's growth. The pictures I've given you is what a $300 load of crushed wet concrete looks like one hour after being spread when a log truck smashed over it. We'd ordered three more loads, but the hauler said it was too wet to dump it, or we'd have had $1,200. In 2006, Royal Coachman built a brick pool home across from me. The owners told me they'd spent $7,000 on the road so it could accommodate the heavy trucks before construction could begin. In 2018, a brick pool home was built off Windy Gap. We had a lot of rain and vehicles were totaled due to road damage. The builder was contacted to no avail. The owners thanked me for collecting money for the road, but refused to contribute. If you want, want to attract wealthier, higher-class residents, like most of you want to be, you're going to have to ensure that we have county-maintained roads for emergency service, septic tank service, et cetera. Many insurance companies won't issue home insurance unless the home is on a county-maintained road. Every time you collect an impact fee, we get the shaft. If I have to go to the state legislature myself, I will. I'll tell them about how I was shafted by the BOCC in 2009. My plumbing was passed without inspection in 2000. The problem was found in 2009. Commissioner Thurston, or some name close to that, said the county should make this right for me. Gary was over them then. He's now dead. And Joe Meek argued since it's been nine years, it just didn't matter. It just shows the lack of character, ethics, and morals of your past members. That's all I've got to say. But I was contacted by Teresa and Joe Royal Caribbean Builders, and he said he remembered them, he remembered the construction, and they put limestone and mullings down on that road. I mean, if you don't know what a log truck does, I do. My daddy did it in West Virginia, and he ticked off a lot of people. But that's about it.
Thank you, Ms. Boone. Mr. Howard, I have not seen the photos that Ms. Boone talked about, so if you could get them to me?
We will, we will.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman and Commissioners. My name is Jamie Beckett. I live at 2223 12th Street, Northwest Winter Haven. I'm here as a representative of the Aircraft Pilot, Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association Foundation. I am their high school aero club liaison. Basically, what I do is work with political bodies like you, school boards, parents, anybody who's interested, to help get high school-aged kids into aviation inside, sorry, inside the fence at the airport where they can work hands-on in a productive manner to learn this new career where they could earn six figures. Just so you're aware, my company provides a four-year STEM curriculum for free to any high school in America that wants it. Hundreds of high schools are using it. Many of them choose to establish an independent aero club, separate from the school system. So, sorry, I keep hitting it. Separate from the school system so that the kids actually own their own outfit. They have their own aircraft. Couple examples. Down in Highlands County, all three high schools worked together at Sebring Airport. They built an airport lane for Story Musgrave, the astronaut who flies that airplane. In Lakeland and in Winter Haven, there are high schools on the airport. They're extension of public high schools, and they both have an aero club associated with them. So, students can leave school at the end of the day, walk across the parking lot, do maintenance, restore aircraft, fly aircraft. They end up going off and doing engineering. The first graduates of that program have now become airline captains and mechanics and engineers, air traffic controllers. If it's something y'all are interested in, I'm happy to come back and deal with any of you or talk to staff. I do have a reasonable relationship with Andy Chan at Wright Rudder Aviation. I've taught safety seminars at his outfit several times over the last few years. One of the things we've found as we do this, the workforce academies, and they're almost all workforce academies, they need an industry partner to become truly successful. So, as y'all do your thinking about the airport, please keep in mind that not only can it be an airport in the traditional sense, the way people think of it, but it can be an educational center, and it can be an economic hub that really benefits the people of Citrus County long-term. And if y'all have any questions, I'm happy to answer. But your city clerk has my contact information. I'll come back whenever you want me.
Thank you, Mr. Beckett.
Thanks so much.
Next speaker?
Hello?
Good afternoon. My name is Brian DeHaven. I live over in Bushnell, and I'm here basically to ask for your continued support of Wright Rudder Aviation. I learned to fly in 1968. That caused me to be exposed to a number of fixed base operators over the years. And I have not been fortunate enough to find an FBO that was so supportive, not only of the safety and education of their clients, but also so supportive of the county in which they work and provide their service. I'm retired. With the booming economy that we have, I tend to go ahead and, when I drive over to Inverness, find other ways that I can extend my limited income so that I can go visit the charitable thrift stores, or the hardware store, or the food stores, or the restaurants. And yes, I'm a county away, and I don't have the political vote for anything that goes on in Citrus County, but I am able to vote with my dollars. So, I very much would like you to extend support so that they can plan for their business and plan to extend what they've done in the past, since you've got national recognition in a number of trade publications. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Hello, Mary Cedar. How are you all day? Well, I'm here to talk to you about something called common sense. It just seems to me that if people in the hazmat suit come and spray on your personal waterway, that's your right, that water is, belongs to you, but it's being sprayed by somebody else. And if it was so safe, why do they have to wear hazmat uniforms? And I'm told that the very men who are spraying that spray have gotten cancer, and the fish are dying, and the birds are dying. And how can that be good for our environment? That's what I want to talk about, is common sense. And I want to say a little something else, two more quick things. You guys know me, okay? You know that I ran for the school board. I've never attacked one person, not my opponents, not anybody. I stood up for what I believed in. And these issues are things to think about. And personally, I'm going to say this one thing and then one other thing. You know, I'm the kind of lady, I like to bring people together. I would have you in my home and sit at my table, and I have done it. I don't like fighting from one person to the next, but we have to make issues come alive because people are dying. And if you think this spraying is good, consider. The environmentalists are telling the ranchers, they can't even let their cows procreate. They're growing meat in the lab. If you think they're done, if you think some people in government are out to help us, you better look again, okay? And then the last thing I just want to say is, we just came from the LaCanta Library Board, and they voted not to approve tax monies for the ALA. And the thing about this is, information from the library is a good thing. Of course, information is a good thing. But do you want to teach kids how to grow, how to make poison and to poison people? Just because it's information doesn't make it good, doesn't make it right. And pornography is unlawful. If a man on Facebook has pornography, child pornography, he gets arrested, okay? But in the public schools, it's lawful. In the library, it's lawful. So, just think about that. And thank you for your time very much. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. John Labriola. I have a letter on file. I represent the Christian Femin Coalition, and I-
Clerk, okay, thank you.
And I actually have some handouts for you today as well. So, I want to pick up on what the last speaker's, and by the way, I wanted to welcome the Chairwoman back. It's good to see you back.
Thank you.
I wanted to pick up on what the last speaker spoke about. I was also at the meeting this morning, the Library Advisory Board meeting in LaCanta Government Building, and it was quite a large crowd that showed up. It was over 30 people coming to say that we want to stop funding the American Library Association. There's a little line item in the library budget for dues, membership dues to the American Library Association. And the reason we were there to oppose that item was because I'm sure you've probably seen in the news how a number of counties, conservative counties across the country, there's a growing movement of counties, as well as some state library, state library boards as well, state library commissions, pulling out of the American Library Association because of their far-left agenda. The, the current president is a self-declared Marxist lesbian, and her big priority has been to push drag queen story hours, as well as putting LGBT explicit materials in the children's section. The packet, which I shared, I wanted to share it with you because I shared it this morning with the board members of Library Advisory Board. There's a couple of different articles in there about statements that the, the current president of the ALA, her name is Emily Dubrinsky, has made quite radical statements, as well as an article in there about how the American Library Association has become notorious for actually advising librarians in conservative areas of how they can sneak explicit LGBT materials into children's sections. So, regardless of whether, or to what extent it's happening in Citrus County, I think it sends a strong statement to withdraw our membership from the ALA as other counties and states now across the country are doing, including Senator Marco Rubio has said that federal funding for the ALA should be halted and that an investigation needs to be launched into how they discriminated against a Christian book publisher, Brave Books, you probably read about that, how they were discriminating against a Kirk, that's Kirk Cameron's publishing company, to try to keep him out of the libraries at the same time that they're pushing drag queen story hour. And one of the handouts has to do, one of the three items in the handout has to do with how the ALA devotes an entire page on its- has to do with how the ALA devotes an entire page on its website to tips on how to, how librarians can conduct a drag queen story hour in their library. So, the vote this morning was actually five to one to recommend to the, that the county withdraw funding from the ALA. We were very pleased with that, and there was a little bit of a back and forth. I encourage all of you to please check out the video from this morning. Like I said, over 30 people showed up from across the county. But especially listen to the discussion toward the end on the board. One of the board members is the president, I'm sorry, the librarian for the college, the College of Central Florida, and so she had a lot of expertise to share. And one of the questions was, you know, what are the benefits that we get from our ALA membership? And are there other ways to get the same benefits? And she explained that we do not need to be a member of the ALA. Specifically what it is, it's the director, the library director holds this membership. And she explained that that's not necessary because there's other places that we can get some of the same, you know, benefits that they supposedly offer. So I would just, I know today is not your budget meeting, but please be aware that that happened this morning. And when your budget comes up, I guess on September the 7th, and again on the 26th, to please go ahead and follow the Library Advisory Board's recommendation and remove, withdraw funding. It sends a strong statement, from the ALA sends a strong statement. If Citrus County does it, I think a lot of other counties will pick up on that in Florida and probably across the country and be part of this movement. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Welcome. Looks like you have your green card all prepared.
My name is George Takas. I live at 7735 West River Bend Road, and I have water problems. Half my property is considered, dedicated as wetlands. Now, my taxes are $3,445.61. I'm 64, 84 years old, and I got $1,250 social security checks. Now, I take care of this wetland, and there's a manhole next alongside my property, and it comes onto the wetland, what is called the wetland. And when I built the house, I had to build a six-inch berm, ten-foot wide, in order to keep the, any water from my property going onto this wetland. And half this property is wetland, even though on a blueprint, which I have, and I don't know if you have any on you, but it shows that most, half my property is wetland, and I cannot build on it, touch it, or even have access to the water. Now, it has like a pond, now you may call it part of Lake Russo, but according to the engineer, they tell me I cannot touch that or anything else because of the wetland situation. And what I like to do is, I just feel that the tax is on it, and I'm being taxed for something that I cannot use. Now, I don't mind cleaning out, and there's, there's a four-foot section that comes in with a chain link fence, which the county must have put up some time ago. My property line actually touches the road. There's no three-foot or anything. It's right next to the road. And this chain link fence reaches in about 35 feet, and it has a 16-foot area that has a chain link on one side with a deadbolt, a bolt lock on either side of that chain link. So I can't go by it, and no, no one from the county has ever come down and cleaned it or anything. But there is five foot from inside that chain link, there's a hole, which is about four to six inches, which drains water into that pond or lake, whichever part you want to call it. And I cleaned that out for the purpose so the water would not back up into the road and cause damage. And of course, I got beer cans and so forth, you know, flowing down. And I, I just feel that I'm paying for property that does, even though it's designed as my property, it's also by the county. The county claims six foot of it with a berm around the side of my property. I cannot pass water-
Thank you. I'm sorry. What is your last name again? Is it Backus or Pakas? I couldn't understand it.
I'm sorry.
What is, what is your last name again? Your last name?
Takas.
Takas. I got it totally wrong.
T-A-K-A-C.
Okay. Once we're done, we'll answer all the questions, but your time is up. Thank you. We might be able to help you. Just hang out for a few more minutes, okay?
You understand what I'm talking about. And you're welcome. I keep, I even cut the grass on a wetland.
Yeah, it's, we'll, we'll have staff talk to you in just a moment, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Stephen Schwartz. I live in Beverly Hills, Pine Ridge. I didn't prepare for, to even come up here at this point in the, at this session. And I was leaving it, and I will see you later at the 5 o'clock when we discuss an issue pertaining to the RV park and putting it in a sensitive area. You were sent the letter, a three-page letter from me that described, if we don't be careful, we are going to destroy the nature coast and all of its waterways, the open land that is necessary for birds and other animals to live on. If you continue building at the pace that you're going, you will never catch up again with infrastructure. Even your own departments, who I get to talk to every once in a while, tell me that they did not expect the growth the way it has come and has become faster than they did. What I hear out here today is similar to what I wrote in my letter. Everyone's talking and saying the same thing to each and every one of you. We are watching how you vote, and we are watching to make sure that you continue to keep Citrus County the nature coast. Because you're destroying, if you keep building and changing things and spraying, you're destroying the nature and peace and quiet that every single one of these residents came here or lived here prior to us coming. Roads have not been done since, in certain places, since 1973. It was interesting that after my letter, and the last time, and Holly, I, you turned around and told me I should go back to building department about that road. Well, I never did. I just wanted to see what was going to happen. Guess what? It was real interesting. They came this morning and paved that 300 feet of destroyed, upcoming devastated infrastructure. Mr. Olson told you way back when, possibly before some of you even came here, infrastructure first, nature second, keep and build in balance. Because if you don't, we will not have a nature coast, and people are going to suffer because the droughts are going to get worse, and floods are going to get worse. So I hope that you have it in your heart, and I'm glad that you have the integrity to see this. The other thing before my time ends is something that I would like to see you address. At the planning board meeting, when Citrus County, when Pine Ridge went before the planning board last month, what took place was Stacy turned around and said, "You're all becoming redundant." Does anybody have anything else to say? Well, that's like a slap in the face. That tells me, not you, but they're not listening to what the residents are saying. And yes, I do understand, they are volunteers, and they are not in an elected state, but you guys are. Thank you.
Hey, how you doing?
Welcome.
Yeah, hey. I'm here to give some support for Wright Rudder Aviation.
Your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Monty Mishu, I live in Inverness. To give some support for Wright Rudder Aviation. I met those guys there probably about three years ago through the glider program. And it's, it's a great program. It does, one of the main things that it does is it allows people to get a taste of aviation for a very cheaper price than it is if you want to go out and get your private pilot's license. And that's what I did. And not only, not only that, but what it does is, it gives people confidence. And I've seen confidence. And I just wanted to tell you that, you know, I've seen it in veterans that come through there. I've seen it through kids, not kids, young, young men and women, you know, going through school, you know? They, they want to get their pilot's license, they want to learn. You know, I tell you, the first time that they solo that, you know, glider themselves, you can just see it. You can see the confidence in them. Another thing that it does, which I take advantage of, is it gives, it gives me a place to go and, you know, have a cup of coffee. I'll tell you, if you never met Herb, he's an 88-year-old gentleman that hangs out at the airport in the morning and drinks coffee. He's a great guy. You know, so much knowledge this guy has, you know, just to sit down and talk with him. Unfortunately, you know, I've, I've been dealt, take it what it is, I'm a disabled veteran. I've had six men and women who actually committed suicide that I knew. I've had two people in my family, my cousin and my granddad, who committed suicide. It, it's terrible, you know? But one thing that we do see is just if they can have a network, you know, just, just one network to go and to talk, you know, not even talk about their personal problems, just to talk, you know? Just to sit down and talk about aviation. We've talked about recipes and what we're making for dinner that day. You know, it's, it's just a huge, huge thing that these guys are doing, you know? And, you know, I, I would just hate to, you know, hear about somebody, you know, committing, you know, committing suicide or, you know, or doing something, you know, that they shouldn't have done because there wasn't that avenue there. And that's what these guys provide. And that, you know, I've seen it, we, we've had, it kind of amazed me, but, you know, this little city of Inverness, little, it's not little anymore, but little city of Inverness, we had, we had three veterans, three veterans. That's crazy, in the same area. And within 30 seconds, you know, we were digging at each other, you know, just like it was back in the days. You know, I've, I've met people that, you know, for the three years that I've there, I've met people that have come from different countries, different states, and we're all friends. You know, I mean, that's, that's the network that, that these guys provide. So anyway, thanks a lot, appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
And have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Jim Fenton. Just want to come in and talk about customer experience at Wright Rudder. They, we've been using private air services for a decade or better. In the past, we had to fly in and out of Brooksville. Pilots wouldn't come in here, the charter service wouldn't, they couldn't get contact with anybody, they couldn't get services. No fuel trucks, that kind of thing. Andy came in about five years ago and did a tremendous job. Has turned that thing around, invested in it, put the fuel trucks in, on-call 24 hours a day. You need something, you've got it. And so from a customer standpoint, it's been fantastic. He's done a great job. From a business partnership standpoint with the county, I don't know the relation between the two parties, but I can tell you that most of my business connections are 40-year connections. Long-term business partnerships. Commissioner Pinnard, you made a comment, I think, the last one I read in the paper, about the commitment, you want to stay with who brought you in. And I think Andy has done something here that no one else has done. They've been talked about forever. He's done it. I think we, you should stay with him. You should find your way. As good partnerships are like good marriages, you're always going to have issues. You find a way to work around them. But there's no one that can come in here and invest and do what needs to be done at this airport if they don't think they've got a 30-year commitment out there. And I know you're not talking 30, but we should be extending even longer term because you're not going to be able to get done what we need with a good business partner. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Patrick Russell, and I live at 4227 East Walker Street over in the Inverness Highlands, I believe that's what they call it.
Ivy Four?
Yeah, Ivy Four, yeah.
No, Inverness Highlands or Inverness Villages Four?
I don't even know what it's.
Okay. Start with the topic, and I'll probably figure it out.
I'm not sure, but, well, it's an honor to be here. One of my best friends I ever had was the county commissioner, and I often wondered what, what he would do in, in this situation, or what he would suggest. But first of all, I appreciate you guys taking some interest in this and addressing it or whatever. But I'm just asking that something is done with our roads, of course. And neighbor, I first found out about this, someone drove up one of my neighbors and said that there could be assessment of up to $50,000 to $100,000 or some crazy number. But I would, I would hope that the assessment is closer to what I was told, which is something more like $600 a year, if possible, but something closer to that. I'll fill out this card. I don't know what else to say at the moment.
We answer everyone when everyone's done? So you can go sit down, fill out your card, and give it to the clerk?
Okay.
And you're in Inverness Villages Four?
Okay.
Ask me how I know.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. A pleasure to be here. Thank you for all you do. I'm here to speak in favor of-
I have to, I know your name, but you have to state it for the record.
What is your name?
Nope.
I'm retired. I don't remember who I am. Rocky Hensley, 7620 East Applewood Drive, Inverness, Florida.
Thank you, Rocky.
Retired about two and a half years now. Previously, it's 46 years in banking. I had the pleasure of meeting Andy five years ago and the banking world, and cannot say enough about what he's done in the five years that he's been there at Wright Rudder. If you haven't been out there, which I have over numerous times. And it's amazing being a lifelong resident here of Citrus County and, of course, Inverness, seeing what has been done in that airport, because again, what it was, what it is now, and what it's going to continue to be. But I know just one thing, in dealing with financials, I know y'all are talking about one-year lease, two-year lease, those sort of things. You can't get any financial commitment if you're having to go out and borrow money, get grants, whatever, on that short-term of a situation. So I know I saw on the agenda, the administrators looking at, you know, recommending a five-year renewal on the lease, which at a minimum, I'm in favor of. If anything longer can be done, of course, you know, consider it under the different constraints that you have to do with a lease. But Andy has not only been a good business partner, but he's been a community partner. Many civic organizations that I belong to and attend, he's financially helped, been involved in. So he's not just a taker, he's a giver. So again, I am in favor of renewing this lease for Andy and doing whatever y'all can do to keep him here because he is an asset. Thank you.
Thank you, Rocky. Anyone else over there? Hard to see with the column. Hi.
Burnett Sheffer, 5920 West Donnerie Loop, Crystal River. I own one of the hangars at Inverness, along with about 10 other people. We have a financial investment there as well as aviation interest. So I wanted to support Wright Rudder. I've been there 20 years, and in 20 years, there's been four different operators. The first was the county, and they had a guy in a trailer that answered the phone and collected the rent. Then I think it was Owens Air came in, did the same thing, no aviation services. Boxsmith came in, same thing. And then five years ago, Wright Rudder came in, and they developed the airport. None of the other three operators had any aviation service, no maintenance, no flight training, just kind of watched over the place. But Wright Rudder has developed it. They have flight training, they have maintenance, they have charter. They have the whole package, very similar to what Crystal River was able to develop with your father's help. And I'd like to see it continue. If there's some question about another operator, I hope you expect the same thing so we can continue to have the same level of service. I was there this morning, there was five airplanes on the taxiway, two landing, and three at the fuel pump. There's 12 airplanes that just fly constantly. It's hard to get in a pattern anymore. So thank you for hearing me out. I appreciate it. Uh, so thank you for hearing me out, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Burnett.
I'm Gerald Fowler, two-oh-nine, East Pilar, Hernando, Florida. I've been in aviation since I was seventeen years old, almost sixty-six years. And, uh, fifty-six years, and, uh, I retired from the military in eighty-two, and made Citrus County my home. In the past forty-two years that I've been retired, more has been done by Wright Rudder than all the previous operators before us has been stated. I think Andy and crew have done a great job, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, no one else? Close open to the public. Um, we still have a lot of Ivy Four folks here, yes? Okay, we'll do, with the board's forbearance, we'll do the Ivy Four update somewhere in this period, is that okay? To, to let them go on their way? I'm going to break normal bro- board protocol and go first, normally the chair would go last. Um, we've taken a lot of flack about Wright Rudder in the last week. And, um, a lot of it was very much, um, inaccurate, uh, this entire board is very, very, very pro-business development, the right kinds of businesses, and I'm not talking about the right kind, right specific company, the right kinds of industries. And Wright Rudder is right up the centerline on what we want in terms of industries. There are some other concerns that held me back personally from supporting a five-year lease. Um, despite, uh, a lot of, um, negative things said, I am going to, uh, support a five-year lease today. For those of you who do not know my background, I am commercial instrument glider, seaplane rated. So, um, I have, I actually soloed almost forty years ago at Crystal River Airport, and I have been overjoyed at the difference in Inverness. I really have. There are some concerns, which held me back last time, but, um, I'm going to move past those concerns. And, uh, and I'm in, wherever the AOPA guy went, I'm an AOPA member, so, there you go. Um, Inverness Villages Four. Uh, Eric, do you want to give any updates? For those of you, I'll go ahead and start though, just getting into position. Um, for those of you who are, who are new before us, thank you for joining us. Um, we are online every other week, someone said semi, or bimonthly, it's actually bi-weekly, I wish it was bimonthly. So you can always track it like that. I have an update at the end of the meeting, every time, this meeting and last meeting, we bumped it up to open to the public to allow people to get home. So, on October tenth, we are going to present what the number is. It was internally, um, guesstimated at eighty to a hundred thousand per lot. We have since gotten, uh, external, uh, person to, or external firm to actually do LIDAR and whatnot and really come up with a, a dialed-in plan. And it's looking like it went from thirty-three condemned lots down to seven. The condemned lots is what drove the theoretical cost up so wildly. Those of you who say that we should have done something a long time ago, remember this is a board of five, two or three of us cycle, are potentially cycling out every two years. As much as any of the five of us would like to unilaterally make decisions like we normally do in our own business lives, we have to get two of our colleagues to come along with us on anything. And oh, by the way, we're only allowed to talk up here in front of sometimes very friendly and sometimes very unfriendly people staring at us. So it's a little difficult to get things moving. Um, I did not have traction, I've been working on this for two and a half years. I did not have traction with the former board, I do with this board. They supported stopping permits, we are not, the, as this story goes, from the legal side of the house, Madam Attorney, we are not allowed to hold permits for lack of another permit. That's why even though SWFMA did not give permits for those roads, we had to still release permits for houses. Enough is enough, this board was brave enough to stop issuing permits, to stop the madness of building on the low lots, that's what's going to drive the cost up. You should thank SWFMA for not coming after those who cut the roads, because I hear, heard from them, they would be coming after the lot owners, they don't want to hurt you, and that's why they have not prosecuted the illegal roads. That's not our business, we don't do that, that's SWFMA rules. You'll also be happy to know that twice now I've put SWFMA, DEP, um, Fish and Wildlife, Forestry, is that it? And the county in the room together. We're all comparing notes. One final note, if, um, Vander Valk has slow walked your house, that has nothing to do with us. There's a whole bunch of houses in the middle there that look like they've started, been building about three years ago and are just laying there, um, then you need to consult an attorney. So, um, I'm on it, I'm trying really hard, and it looks like October tenth, we're going to have some good news that'll bring it down much more in line with what you would have paid normally had you bought a finished product, like, you know, that had it all planned in. Eric?
Uh, no additional news to, to what you had, other than we continue to do our weekly inspections.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, who would like to go next? I may, I need to review my notes, I may have something else, but hopefully I gave you all enough time to get organized, who wants to go? Anyone? Anyone?
I feel like you've got Ivy Four covered.
Yeah.
Okay.
From your lips to God's ears, I have Ivy Four covered.
Yeah. Um, I don't know if the gentleman named Monty is still here, he was actually talking about the FBO, which I, oh, Tito says I'm not loud enough. How about that, good? Um, the gentleman, whose name was Monty, um, not that it's our FBO's role, I love that you have camaraderie there, thank you for sharing that. But for veterans and suicide rates, um, there is a, a place that veterans can go do that, so I just want to give that piece of information, it's called Soldiers' Freedom Outdoors. The gentleman's name that runs that locally is Jason Bucy, and I don't see him, but I am happy to connect anyone to that organization that is for veterans and that is geared to things like that, for decompression and suicide prevention. It's very important for all people, especially to our veterans, so please, it's Soldiers' Freedom Outdoors. Um, I don't know if it's Mr. Burnett, or if that was your, your first name, that, those were some good comments, and thank you for that, for updating us, um, on what you have seen and the difference. The shameful thing is, and Mr. Chan's here, I wish that the last meeting, that's exactly all the things that would have been communicated, what I did not hear communicated from him, maybe from some others, was anything about a five-year lease. Uh, it was a fifty-year lease, which we all said that that wasn't doable for us at this time. Um, so some of us thought, well, if you want fifty, that's not going to work now, maybe it'll work next year. So for running to the newspaper and saying, oh, that's not business-friendly, I don't know of any other businesses except for that one, that's depending on the airport at this time, although we hope to change that in the very near future. Um, Commissioner Davis had said that we've had concerns, and I alluded to that at the last board meeting, but wanted to be a good partner and didn't want to share that because I wanted to get past that. But, um, people are asking now, Commissioner Finnegan, what did you mean by that? And we keep alluding to that. So, no, we're not crazy Commissioners, we're not trying to work against our FBO. We had concerns, and shortly after I was elected, the concern came up that although Mr. Chan says he has this business proposition and is securing funds, it seemed to be the opposite because against Homeland Security, um, an RV was put at our airport, and that's supposed to be secured, and then advertised on Airbnb and did not have potable water. And the only reason the county found out about this was because the person developed a rash from, I assume washing up was the information I got, and still didn't call us, called the State of Florida with some complaints. So yes, that is, that's not good business, that's not good decision-making. So we had some major concerns. Um, and I'm so happy that people have come forward and talked about all the good things at the airport. Uh, we have heard opposite of that. But since these people aren't here saying that, I, I digress. But, uh, there were concerns, the other concern is a business plan was not brought up with fifty years. And it was talked about building a hangar. I went to Mr. Howard after that because Mr. Chan said that, uh, about a financial commitment. Well, there was a piece of paper that was given without his business on it, without his name on it, a random person's name on it, that I don't know that had anything to do with that. So maybe it's simply a case of miscommunication, that's fine, um, but nothing was adding up. And we only get the, the information that we get, and then we have to make decisions on that. I think if, uh, we had worked out some of these issues without bringing it all out and, um, running and, and saying things that weren't quite true, that happened at this meeting to the newspaper, uh, and a five-year continuation was asked for, maybe it would have went differently. But none of those things occurred. So I hope now we can at least be all on the same page. There were grave concerns, we were trying to address those concerns, and again, a five-year lease wasn't asked for. So we were just trying to get through our consultation. That's going to happen, we'll see what this board decides to do today. Um, and I guess that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Commissioner Finnegan. Um, Rose and Carla, did staff get with either one of those, the ninety-nine-year-old and then the logging damage? Okay, okay, um, if, can someone talk, find out what's going on, perhaps Carlton? You'll get with her, thank you, I appreciate that. Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, I feel like, um, Inverness Villages Four has, has been adequately covered. Uh, quite frankly, I think there's one solution, that's the MSBU, and we'll get to vote on that, and we'll see where that lands. Uh, outside of that, I, I don't see the roads being fixed, uh, if that does not get, um, if that does not get passed. Um, that may or may not be what they want to hear, but that's the solution. And, uh, we'll see where that goes. Wright Rudder Aviation, I will support the five-year, uh, extension. I feel like the five-year mark should be the time that we review and see if they've met all the expectations of the contract. And if they have, then we renew it, and that should be able to continue, uh, for as long as the original, the, uh, the original, uh, contract contemplated. Um, so anyway, I'll be supporting that today, and I hope that, uh, I hope that the rest of my colleagues do as well. Taxing, uh, one gentleman saying that, uh, he doesn't think we should be taxing the wetlands on his property. I agree. I don't think we should tax wetlands, I don't think we should tax setbacks on private property, I don't think we should be taxing easements on private property, or most importantly, cross-access on commercial property. That when we start, when the county starts building, uh, access roads at the expense of private businesses, uh, there should be some cost benefit, uh, to the, uh, the commercial entity, um, or a, a cost savings to the commercial entity who is giving up a portion of their property for the benefit of the community. And, uh, that's exactly what, uh, what the wetlands, uh, setbacks and easements are. I know it'll never go anywhere, but just wanted to let him know I agree with him. Um, and I certainly would support all of those. Uh, I'm very interested in hearing more about, um, uh, the ALA and how today's vote went. Um, you know, I think probably like many of these national organizations, they start off, uh, with a good cause, a good mission, and good purpose, and, uh, start collecting government, uh, money, or start collecting, uh, public funds, uh, through memberships, not just ALA and, and however they may or may not have lost their way, uh, but some organizations that the county belongs to. And I think those are memberships that need to be looked at. And when these national organizations lose their way, uh, then I think it's time to start pulling back public funds from them, let them go do, um, uh, do, carry out their, their new or expanded mission with, um, uh, counties or local municipalities, uh, or states that, that support what this new and expanded mission is. So I'll be interested to hear more about that. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner Baze.
I think we've addressed pretty much everything. Um, I would just like in the future, when somebody comes up that needs to be addressed by staff, that staff just kind of finds their way to the side, gets the information and gets their issue addressed. I guess I'll make this comment about Wright Rudder. I think there's blame on both sides of that. That ended up on an agenda item approximately twenty days before the lease renewal. It had no staff recommendation. It was portrayed to us as a fifty-year lease. We were thrown into a mix of trying to come up and negotiate something on the whim. My biggest concern is, is that I guess I always felt like we were business partners. Citrus County and Wright Rudder were business partners. And I don't know of any person out there that's a business partner with one another that doesn't try to negotiate the best for both sides. And I think we have both tried to do that with each other over the years. What concerned me mostly is the fact that after all of this was over, that it was portrayed that we weren't a good business partner. I think in five years, that Citrus County acquired fourteen million dollars and is turning dirt. And that we're looking expanding, finishing out Watson Road, that we're looking at fire suppression, that we're putting in a fire station at the corner, that, uh, we're working with the school to try to get an AMP program out there, turning it into what Mr. Beckett called a educational campus. So yes, I do think that we have, I don't know what happened four years ago, but I can tell you the last eight months that I've been on this board, I've worked really hard on this airport to make sure that we are bringing forward to make this a viable business. And so I, I've always loved Andy and Siobhan, I thought we were good business partners, but to be portrayed in the light afterwards that we weren't, um, I would have loved if they would have come to the table and said, what an exciting time to be in business with you. You're putting fourteen million dollars to work, you're turning dirt, we're going to finish the road, we got water lines going in, we're, we, we are even looking at doing the three-phase power loop. So there's lots going on out there. That's all I was looking for, I wasn't looking to do anything else other than trying to have a good joint business partner. And I thought that that's what we were. I was a little dismayed to be put in such a bad light afterwards. And so, um, I am going to support the five-year lease, but I hope that there are some amends made on both sides of that. Thank you.
Are you done?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
There was one other, sorry, three pages of notes, guys. Um, speaking of staff, I like what she said about staff getting with people, George Taccas with the, um, wetlands, if he's still in here. There may, no? Is he gone? Okay. Uh, hello, sorry. Um, maybe get with him, just to make sure that there's not anything that we're supposed to be doing there.
I'm sure it closes itself.
Yeah. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, and Commissioner Finnegan, you had a chance to speak? Yeah, okay, I just want to make sure. Um, thank you, um, board, I heard what you said, I heard the comments, I appreciate, um, I support a lot that you said, I, Inverness Village Four, we're all a big proponent to get that fixed. It's been forty, fifty years problem, how long?
Fifty-one, I think.
Fifty-one years, but the one concern I've had, and I will say it again, and I keep looking for the people I, Terry or Doctor, and, is that it, this is not an affordable solution that I can come up with. And, um, I think that's what it comes down to with, um, fixing this, is how do we get it to be affordable for the residents? Um, and Ms. Rose, uh, she's left-
And Ms. Rose, she's left. She deserves to go at ninety-nine. She needs to leave. But owners always have to take care of their property, whether it's a vacant lot or not. So I hope that we can look into that and find that out and make sure that she feels good. And I know Rebecca Bays has got her on the radio now, so she'll take care of it. And the, the aviation, Right Rudder, I have always been a huge supporter, obviously, of, and I will continue to support. I was sorry that I wasn't here when this came up, but I'm here now and I will be supporting their contract and moving on. I agree, though, that there were both sides there was at fault. And hopefully, we can put that behind us and be the team that we're to be because there's big things going to happen out there. So that is all I have, I believe. Oh, and I'm a big proponent for dredging, not spraying. So I've always been about dredging. So I agree with the ladies that spoke about that. So, and sir, I heard that they they're taking care of you. They're, I agree, you should not be paying taxes on wetlands and and easements, just like Commissioner Kennard said. So, was it wetlands? I'm sorry, did I misspeak? Don't give me that look. Okay. So, thank you. Okay, so we'll close open to the public. And we are now at E, regular business. Board?
Second.
Thank you.
This is where it speeds up.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kennard. I heard Commissioner Finnegan first.
Chair?
Yes.
I don't have an F on my agenda.
I don't either.
Neither do I.
No, I apologize. A one, A through E.
E one, A through E one, E. Okay, is there any public comment on regular business? Seeing none, is there any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes five, zero. E two.
Motion to approve E two?
A motion by Commissioner Davis. I'm looking for a second. Commissioner Kennard, is there any public comment on E two budget transfers? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five, zero. Amy, can can we take that out in the hall? Thank you. E three.
Motion to approve E three.
A motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any public comment on E three budget resolutions? Seeing none. Is there any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Right now, it passes four, zero. Get Commissioner Davis's vote when she comes back. E four, water incentives, supporting efficiency. I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve E four.
Thank you, Commissioner Finnegan. I'm looking for a second. Commissioner Kennard, is there any public comment on water incentives? Seeing none, any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That's four, zero right now. E five, billboard, billboard sales agreement for Clear Channel Outdoor.
Motion to approve E five.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment on E five? Seeing none, any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That passes four, zero right now. E six.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E six, A and B.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard. I did hear Commissioner Finnegan first for a second. Was that, were you piping up?
I was starting to, but I didn't.
Oh, okay, so, thank you. And then I have a motion by Commissioner Bays, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment on E six? Seeing none, any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes four, zero. E seven.
Motion to approve E seven, A, B, and C. Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Finnegan. And a second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any public comment on E seven, A, B, and C? Seeing none, any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five, zero. Commissioner Davis, E three, your vote?
Aye.
E four?
Aye.
E five?
Aye.
E six?
Aye.
Thank you, ma'am. We are caught up. E eight, Veterans Villages of Citrus County, ninth modification to memorandum of understanding. I'm looking for-
Madam Chair, motion to approve E eight and B, A and B.
Second.
I have a motion for from Commissioner Bays for E eight, A and B, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five, zero. E nine, Transit Development Plan, twenty-twenty-three annual progress report.
Motion to approve E nine.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Finnegan, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment on E nine? Seeing none, is there any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five, zero. E ten, with the Lakouchi Regional Water Supply Authority Grant Agreement.
Motion to approve E ten.
Second.
Commissioner Davis, thank you. And second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any public comment on E ten? Thank you, seeing none, any further board comment?
I would be remiss to not chime in. Let everybody know, who hasn't heard it before, this is applying for our own money back. A local organization that we belong to takes our money and then asks us to apply to get it back in grant form.
And how are you going to fix this?
I'd like to do away with the whole organization and get the Charles, Charles A. Black Water Production Facility back in Citrus County ownership, like it should be.
Very good, sir. Thank you. Okay, any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five, zero, to get our money back. Okay. E eleven, Citrus County Forfeiture Fund Request.
Motion to approve E eleven?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? Is there any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five, zero. E twelve, Core Civic Contract Monitoring Update for July twenty-twenty-three.
Motion to approve E twelve?
Second.
Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Bays. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Is there any further board comment?
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Davis?
Um, it has been, did we change the fees that we were charging them?
Yeah, several.
At some point?
Yeah, several months ago.
Can you remind me what they were and what, because they're a thousand dollars a day now?
They're a thousand, I think they were three.
Three thousand.
Three thousand, I think it was, yes.
We went from three to one?
Correct.
And where do we stand with getting the internal monitor and all that?
The addendum has been sent to them. Uh, so we're waiting back. I don't know if we have an update from Core Civic, if they send anything back today. They do have the addendum now. So we're waiting them to give it a thumbs up and we'll bring it to the board at some point.
Well, we'll say, looking at the the track of what the percentage employment is or staffing is, it doesn't look like the three or the one really made much difference in-
Right. And the addendum does address the contract monitoring. Actually, most of the addendum is actually that. Actually, if you look at it, it's all like a one-pager. So we're looking forward to getting that before this board soon.
Okay. Really like to make some progress on that at some point. Thank you.
Thank you. So, E twelve, we have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Bays. Amy, did I open it up to the public? Thank you, any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five, zero. E thirteen.
Motion to approve E thirteen with the updated wording in the contract.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion made by Commissioner Finnegan and a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment regarding the Behavioral Health Facility Livestream Contract? Seeing none, is there any board comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bays?
I'm very concerned that we put together some, a scope and our attorney was charged with doing it. It came back. All the things that, when Mr. Cherry came before our board and made a presentation, they have now kind of struck this through the document. He specifically, I went back and pulled up the record from the May meeting, I believe it is, where he said that staff would be no less than three individuals, APRNs, I believe he called it, and two psychiatrists that would be on staff. They have now marked through that. They'll, I mean, there is no accountability in this for the types of services. They've struck through the twenty-three-hour hold. All the things that we're really trying to work on, trying to get to where we're going, they've kind of negated in the, in the contract. And that concerns me because if we're really going to change the trajectory of this, and we just talked about this this morning in my meeting, that this is the contract that we have with an organization to provide these services. What we have a hard time, two-thirds of all of our children in the state of Florida are on Medicaid. And we face having adequate providers in this industry. And this is the one organization that we've contracted with to give these services. And they're now telling us they don't know if they can do it. And that's what their contract is supposed to be with the state. And so it concerns me that that they're saying they're not going to do this. So I can't support this contract.
Commissioner Finnegan?
At first blush, I can understand Commissioner Bays's concern with the staffing. But DCF will not allow this place to function without the psychiatrist. So there's, so there's state rules. The way it's written, if a minimum of three is on site, what happens if one of those three is out sick with COVID for two weeks? They don't want to be out of compliance. What if someone changes jobs and now they need thirty to sixty days to hire someone else? They shouldn't have to be out of compliance for that. So I just think it's the wording in this. They have every notion to put the three on there. And like I said, the state won't allow this place to run without the appropriate psychiatrist running it. But we can't have a contract where something could happen and then they bounce in noncompliance. So I can understand why a few things were changed.
Commissioners, any-
Chair?
Yes.
I need some motion clarification. Did Commissioner Finnegan desire for that motion to be approve item E thirteen, A and B with the updated wording in the contract? I don't think I would approve A because that was just a decision-making. So I took care of that by saying the wording as as changed before us. So then that would leave B. Thank you. You're welcome.
I know you're agreement with that, Commissioner Davis?
Um, I seconded it for the sake of discussion. I, I share the concerns, but I also see Commissioner Finnegan's point. Business being what it is and people being out sick and people changing jobs, totally get it. And so I believe Rick Hankey tried to contact all of us. He, he managed to catch me this morning. He said that he was scheduled at three different places this afternoon. And despite all best efforts, he does not have a doppelganger to be here. His stand-in to be here had COVID, has COVID. So I told him that my issue is that there is no teeth in this at all. There's no performance aspect and that that bothers me. He did say the same thing, that it is to be a Baker facility requires that they have a psychiatrist for a short term because of various issues that may arise. They can use a certified nurse practitioner, a psych certified nurse practitioner, must be supervised by a psych, psychiatrist. And medical director from Lake and Sumter could fill the role, but he wants to have someone based in Citrus County. So presumably, the Lake and Sumter Medical Director could fill in as the supervising psychiatrist for a licensed, for a certified nurse practitioner. This is all talking in circles. I'm still a little perturbed and I would very much like to hear what everyone else has to say. Because I'm, I'm worried about it, but I also understand the challenges in trying to get this contract written to protect both parties.
Commissioner Kennard?
I think this is another one of those issues that this board has challenged with. We're either going to participate in funding a facility or we're not. And if we decide to fund a facility, which I believe that we have, we need to fund, participate in funding the brick and mortar portion of the facility and then get out of the way. There are experts out in our community. Livestream is certainly the leader in those experts, but there are many other groups involved as well that have far superior experience and knowledge in, in the operations of these things and treating these things than elected officials. This is one board. All it takes is another, a different board of elected officials up here to get deep into the weeds of managing the operations of, of a mental health facility, a Baker Act facility, mental health treatment campus, whatever names we're going to put to it. Dialing back to what our role is, our role is, are we going to participate in funding the brick and mortar portion of that? The state has determined that they are going to. Hernando County has determined that they are going to. We have voted, I believe, three times now that we are going to participate in it. It is time to put this thing to bed and let Livestream move forward. I understand the concerns. Livestream understands the expectations, but it's time to put this to bed to, to give them the confidence that Citrus County is on board with helping to participate in the funding. As Commissioner Finnegan said, the state is the one that, that issues the license to them to operate a Baker Act facility and mental health treatment facility. The state is going to hold their feet to the fire on whether or not they are properly staffed. But Livestream has been in operations, I believe, Sumter County or Lake County for, I believe it's in the neighborhood of forty-plus years. This isn't a Johnny-come-lately organization that's gonna, that's gonna nickel and dime a facility just to do something that they don't particularly, they, they didn't come into Citrus County looking to open a Baker Act facility. We asked them to do it. And they said that they would, they would be willing to do so, but here's the help that they need to get that facility open. I'm glad to see we've got a motion on the floor. I'm glad to see we've got a second. I very much understand the concerns, but I'm prepared to support it and I hope we move forward with it.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'm going to tell you my concerns. We specifically asked Livestream if there would be a psychiatrist on staff. And they stood up there and told us yes. And for them to scratch through a minimum of three and then put appropriate medical staffing and scratch through psychiatrist, APRN, and PA, are you telling me, this is what it's, I'm hearing, that it's watered down the qualifications of the service providers? Meaning a psychiatrist can be replaced with an appropriate medical staff? Is that a CNA? Because according to this, it's whoever they deem appropriate. And I'm sorry, we have been supportive. We've pushed through this. We're trying to- Because according to this, it's whoever they deem appropriate. And I'm sorry, we have been supportive. We've pushed through this. We're trying to get there. But they said to us they would have a psychiatrist on duty. And, um, I, I'm tired of being on the wrong end of contracts. We've had some really poor contracts. And I'm frankly tired of it because it always comes back, commissioners didn't do their homework and that we look bad. So that line right there is very concerning to me and I feel like, I honestly feel like that's the one thing that we said we wanted. And they scratched through it. So I'm, I'm sorry, I, I don't feel like I can budge on that. And you, you can say the state regulates it, but we're responsible for what happens in our county and happens to our citizens. I am also concerned with the twenty-three hour hold. We have a lot of people with dementia that don't necessarily need to be Baker Act, but they need to be maybe, um, monitored for a little bit. And, um, they scratched through that too. So we do have a motion on the floor, but, um, I don't feel good about it and I, I'm not gonna support this, this, these line items that have been scratched through. Commissioner Bayes?
This is our two million dollar investment and I feel like this contract is our two million dollar investment and it is for a Baker Act, um, facility. But I guess my concern is, is if we don't have the appropriate staff, what good does a building do us if we don't have the right staff? And they get paid regardless of the care. So I feel like we're right back to where we started, um. And I'm, I, I'm just, I can't support this. I, I, it just doesn't make sense to me if they want to come back to the table. And, um, you know, it may very well be that somebody's out sick or they have an issue, but we desperately need the professional care. If we're going to spend our two million dollars to build this building, then this is what I'm hearing. Every time I go into the courtrooms or I listen to the judges or I work with the people on the front lines, we need the care. We need the professional care in our community. And I thought that's why we were spending this two million dollars was to get this building in our community, keep our people here and get them the help that they need.
Madam Chair. Commissioner Finnegan?
I just want to reiterate that this place cannot function or be staffed or operate without a psychiatrist and without the appropriate staff. It has to have the appropriate staff. Even if we pass it with this wording, they have to have a psychiatrist. They have to have the appropriate staff. I just understood that provision for, like I said, you know, if, if it.
What, what would be the need to mark out then?
So if there is not a psychiatrist on site, like let's say they're functioning out of Lake County because the psychiatrist is no longer employed and they need sixty days, is this board going to be okay with them being out of compliance technically? I mean, we need to move this forward. So, uh, you know, if, if the motion dies like is, I'm probably gonna make another motion. But, um, I would like for it to go through like this. We just need to know, so if we vote to keep all the wording as it is without their changes, what happens when that psychiatrist has to function from Lake County because there's a hiccup and they're trying to hire a new one?
Madam Chair.
Isn't that kind of the same issue that we talk about with CoreCivic? Them trying to hire? I mean, it, it's the, it's kind of the same, same path we're going down. I mean, we, we, i- if this isn't, if they have to conform to this, I don't see the need to strike that language out of there then. Because if the state mandates what their process is or what their staffing levels are, then they should have never had to have gotten that out. Because if, if it is accurate that they can work from another location and be in compliance with this contract, then why cross that out?
This isn't at all like CoreCivic. CoreCivic, they're not hiring entry-level positions. We're talking about a very specialized field of usually one person on staff and that's one person. CoreCivic, we're talking about many positions entry-level not being filled.
Commissioner Cannard, and then I have a question for our attorney.
Uh, I want to correct you on one thing that you said, Madam Chair. Um, you said that, uh, that they could staff it however, however they felt the need or however they felt. Uh, however they wanted to. And that's just not accurate. They, they have to abide by the state law, state regulations, uh, the organization that issues their license. So it's not just that they can decide, oh, we're not gonna staff this, we're not gonna staff this. They have to meet, uh, state licensing, uh, requirements. Um, and, you know, that is something that we, I don't feel we should be involved with, you know. Quite frankly, I think we are way too deep in the weeds on this project already. Uh, to me, I see this as a brick and mortar investment. Uh, we make the investment in brick and mortar and stay out of it. Let the professionals, it's not that they, you know, go unregulated or anything like that, unsupervised. Uh, they're, they, they are held to requirements far more stringent, uh, than what this county board would put on them. And, um, that, we should allow those things to move forward, to work as they're supposed to. So, uh, I'm gonna support it. And, um, I'm, I, I will be happy to support, uh, the motion as it's put on the floor now. And we can move forward with uh, much, much bigger, um, items that I don't believe much more important, but much bigger items that, that lie ahead of us yet.
Thank you. And Commissioner Cannard, I'm gonna disagree with you. Because it's not my job to know what their license tells them to do, but in this contract, it's my job. And it says, provide appropriate medical staffing on site at the facility in Citrus County as determined by Livestream. So there's, I didn't get anything wrong. It says it right here. So, y- y- you know, if that's the case and they have to follow the rules, then why strike through this?
It does say in accordance with applicable statutes and regulations.
Yeah, but I, that hasn't been supplied to me. So, to me, reading this contract, I, I'm just telling you, we specifically said, this board specifically said, are you gonna have a psychiatrist in Citrus County? That's why we directed the attorney to put that language in there and they struck through it. That makes me uneasy. Comish-, uh, Madam Attorney, do you have what the, uh, the status and, uh, the state statutes and regulations are?
No ma'am.
Okay.
I, I don't know what they're required. Uh, perhaps in an effort to move this along, if the concern is that uh, it, it's been expressed that the concern might be that someone might be out sick or, you know, have COVID or something. Maybe, do, do you want to change it from three to another number?
They took out three.
Right, but what I'm saying is, you know, counter, you know, counter back. If it's, if three is too many, then maybe two or, um, maybe put back some of the language. Um, it's just very difficult to determine what appropriate is. That's just a really tough word.
It's very difficult for me to s- know what appropriate medical staffing is. And I can only go by what's given to me here. And, you know, this board can decide what they want to do, but I'm not gonna support this change. And whether it's in the weeds or not, this is a two million dollar investment.
I, I can, I can ask them what statutes and regulations apply to them.
And I haven't spoken to anybody from Livestream. I haven't had that, um, privilege.
No problem.
So I just can only go by what's struck through. So, any other further, further board comments?
I would. Turn that on. I would say that we're, we're close. Um, I just feel like there needs to be some sort of happy meat in the middle there to make sure that we have our concerns addressed. Because it is two million dollars of taxpayer money.
Okay, so board, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Finnegan and a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment? Please step forward. You have not filled out a green card. Please do so. You'll have three minutes and address the chair, please.
Name is Stephen Schwartz. I live in Pine Ridge. I've had a child in one of those facilities at one point, unfortunately. And it is very important to have staff on, because I remember one time, um, he had to wait an additional twelve to fourteen hours because there was no therapist locally, and this was in Ocala. And he had to end up waiting for someone to come out from the outside. If they're telling you that, well, they're gonna have staff, they have ways of getting around it. And I would like to see it, um, more solidified to the way that Ms. Schlebeck is talking, that it's if you, you guys agreed on something at the last meeting and now you're gonna change it. I think that's wrong. I think you should stick with what you all agreed upon and what the writing was. We don't have an attorney for no reason at all to look behind your backs and tell you and put language in there that is pertinent to what you're about to vote on. So I would ask each and one of you to seriously either amend it or go back to your attorney, but please don't vote on it without it being solidified to the best advantage of not only the people that are going to be in the facility as a patient, but also that it's gonna fit in lines with everything that you've asked for. And that's all the time I need. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Donna Rummel, Inverness. Great to see you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I think you better check in all the weeds in this endeavor that you have because you don't know what's in there. They're already making changes. I don't know how many people you're going to have in this facility. We don't know what kind of people you're going to have in that facility. I don't think you know anything. All you know is that they're changing the staff already. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on the, on E thirteen? Seeing none, is there any further board comment? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Nay.
That passes three-two. Okay, additional item E fourteen. This is a litter crew position. Mr. Howard?
Yes, I think I had mentioned in our strategic retreat, these are the rock stars of, uh, county government, all the good work that they're doing. Actually seen this morning doing a lot of good work. And they were support to bring this forward today to add four more additional, um, uh, staff. Um, so we're asking, uh, recommendation is approve that and the budget transfer as well so we can get this recruitment going and do amazing work across this county.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, I will happily make the motion to approve E fourteen A and B.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan and second by Commissioner Davis, this is part of a enterprise fund?
That is correct.
Thank you. So I appreciate, I wasn't at that meeting, but I appreciate this coming forward. Is there, um, any public comment on E fourteen A and B? Seeing none, is there any further board comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Pass is five zero. Very good. Okay, outstanding commission items. Mr. Howard?
Uh, no change.
No change, okay. Get there. So this is informational only?
Yes, we wanted to bring this forward. There is a lot of progress, um, actually happening with the animal shelter. I'm asking Eric Kett if he'll come forward. Um, I've noticed some articles in the paper, just, I just wanted to clarify with the public where we're at and where we're gonna be at between now and December. Uh, there is a lot of work that staff is doing. And of course, this is a top high priority for this board. We're making lots of progress and we're, we're gonna make this, uh, project a reality.
Thank you. Mr. Head?
Good afternoon again, Commissioners. Eric Kett, Community Services Director. Just wanted to give you an update as, as was just said, that just a little bit of an upgrade on the, on the processes, uh, where we've been, what we've been working on um, since April twenty-fifth. Um, that was when you, um, in about three and a half months, um, since you made that selection of the conceptual building design. Um, that has allowed for us to work with the architect, the engineer to move forward on those, those larger development and construction documents. Um, I'm sure many of you have been involved in large projects before. You're familiar with the thirty, sixty and ninety percent when we're working through and working out all of those details in those designs. So we thought we'd do a little overview of that thirty, sixty, ninety that did cause a little confusion with the public when we did an update on the thirty percent, knowing where that was and where we were in the process. Um, so basically with our thirty percent, what that is, obviously we're reviewing and revising all of the floor plans. We reached this at this past July sixth. Um, we received that thirty percent back from the architect and engineers. We're laying out, that's where we laid out all of the major site elements. Um, we've got, uh, the base layers, all of those big picture items. We've gotten a lot of feedback from all of the entities that are critical in that design process. You know, that includes staff at all number of levels. Um, and that's where we also went, um, at staff's suggestion to do a pre-application meeting with our building division. Um, and that includes, of course, engineering, planning. We've utilized, uh, fire systems. All of those, took a look at those thirty percent designs to make sure that we're moving in the right direction, um, and getting all of those documents correct. We also are working on the rezoning of the property itself. Um, as you may already know, that, that passed the PDC this past Thursday. Um, and that will be before you on October tenth. And that simply changes it from PSI to GNC with PUD. Specifically that language, I'll need to read it. Uh, and that changes it from the PSI public, semi-public institutional to a GNC PUD, general commercial with a planned unit development for an animal shelter with outside kennels and other government issues and uses, excuse me. So as we move forward?
Sir, sir, please, please don't sit down there and just, yeah, thank you.
No problem. As we move forward, we've already started working with, all taking all of that thirty percent, um, input that we received from all the staff um, and the planning, the, uh, pre-application meeting. We're at sixty percent, moving towards that sixty percent. That's where we get into the constructability. We're incorporating all of that feedback. We're gonna be focusing on the analysis, all of the budget considerations that we need to consider um, based on your direction back in April twenty-fifth. Um, this is also where we start doing a lot of the value engineering. Um, we want to, you know, it's the most efficient and economical time to do that. As we start working through this phase, we'll be building a preliminary schedule, um, for both the, uh, construction schedule, the phasing plan, all the logistics necessary. And we will have a second pre-application meeting we plan to have so that we stay on track with all of those, uh, permit requirements and other things, uh, to keep us moving forward. We ex- we expect to be finished with that right around the end of September. Um, and that will also coincide with the October tenth bringing in the, um, the rezoning forward. So we can probably give you another update as soon as October tenth. Um, so that we can not go as long as we did this time without a formal update to you. And then that's gonna move us into the ninety percent design. That's when those construction documents are basically finished. That's when all, we submit all of that, all of those plans, specifications for the project are completed and we'll be submitting them for permitting review. We expect to be doing that right around the end of December. Uh, that's when we'll build out that construction schedule, do any final modifications to the permitting or the, or any code considerations that we need to make. And then, of course, we'll be pushing forward into the, uh, just a quick update, I mean, a quick review, uh, September twenty, September of twenty-three, we're gonna get that sixty percent design. Then December, we'll have the ninety percent design. Then in March, we'll be going out to bid and receiving all of those building permits. That's when we do our bidding process, um, with the goal of having that bid back to you for approval by May of twenty twenty-four. And then do an anticipated construction period of June twenty-four through November of twenty-five. That is where we are. Quick and early, any questions?
So taking, um, moving in by end of twenty-five?
I would hope so. Yep, if we get, if everything stays on track, that would be the goal. That would be opening in November of twenty-five. Fall construction stays on schedule.
Or build a new morgue too, and that's fall of twenty-seven. So hopefully the morgue won't overtake.
Very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, G two. The Pine Ridge Golf Course Public Hearing moving, um, back here.
Yes, we received word from the college with some, some concerns that they had. Um, so we're asking approval to move this back here. Um, due to other, uh, scheduling conflicts that we have already, this would move this, uh, till October the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three at this building location. So we're seeking, uh, discussion, um, but also ultimately approval from this board to allow us to move it back to this location.
Okay, board, anyone care to make a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any public comment on this item?
Commissioner Stephen Schwartz, Pine Ridge. Considering the, uh, validity of what's gonna be that day, how are you preparing or going to prepare to allow the number of residents that are expected? And that's why you moved it originally. And I understand you have a, you have a problem, you know, with the college. But how are you going to be able to allow all the residents not only to speak? And that means shifting them. Are you gonna have more than one room with viewing so that they can see it, uh, be able to, uh, comment on it? And, uh, I have no objection to a move date because that only means you're gonna have more people because it's all over Facebook. It's all over social media around the county, in Citrus County, word of mouth, in next door. There is a big movement going on, and as I told you in my letter, that's what the grassroots movement in, which is not started by me. But I can tell you that it is growing exponentially. And you can't expect a large group of people to be here. And in fairness to them and everyone else, including yourselves, um, I, like I say, uh, they need to know that. I've put out to everyone, and so has Ron and other people that are promoting the people to come and be out here to keep this civil, be respectful, and peaceful. And that's what I would hope that would happen. And if you have a lot of people, you know, you got a security issue here just as much with people flowing out. At the, at the planning board meeting, the fire marshal came in and actually told people that they couldn't stay because there were just too many people. So I don't know how you can address that. You got five people up here with five brains and wonderful ways of figuring out what to do. You just need to come up with something that's going to, uh, be adhered to, that everyone has the opportunity to be able to see it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Hello.
Hello, everybody. Madam Chair, welcome back. Glad to see you.
Thank you.
Uh, just to let everybody know, I went to the meeting at CF. Um, it's a logistic nightmare. I, in my honest opinion, this is the best place to have it. I understand that, you know, we're short on space for everybody. This is no different than the Sugar Mill Woods meeting we had. It's no different than the library meeting we have. It's not gonna be any different than your Zella meeting tonight. Pine Ridge residents are the same as everybody else's residents. So in my law enforcement opinion of thirty years, okay? Safety wise, for you, for them, for everybody else, this is the best venue to have this meeting. Now, it's televised. They can watch it on the computer. I do it every Tuesday from my office. I watch this meeting if I can't be in attendance. I want everybody to have the opportunity to speak. So if they wish to leave after they speak, I will let somebody else come in the building. But we're not gonna go any further than this room and the overflow of the jar. The meeting starts at one o'clock, correct? So we can't use the courtroom.
I'm sorry, five oh one.
Oh, it is a five oh one?
That, and, and before you s- say anything about, this is a large building and technology is an amazing thing.
It is.
And I have so much, I, I wasn't here when this vote happened, deputy. But I would not have supported moving it because this is a secure building. We have you all here and thank you for your thirty years of experience because we wanna keep the citizens safe. Because I know that we're protected, but there's a large crowd and we wanna make sure they're protected.
A hundred percent.
So, so this is a big building at five oh one and technology is an amazing thing.
And you're gonna have a huge crowd tonight, and I'm gonna have four deputies here.
Yeah.
You know, so I'm gonna make sure that, you know, everybody's good. But fair is fair. And like I said, I went to the, the college to see if we could do it. It is just a logistic nightmare for real. It is a lot of reasons why you should not have it there. It's great for events, not an event like this, though. So I just wanted to address you guys, let you know that I did go. And these are my reasons why you still should stay here.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Chair for Public Records, can we please have him state his name?
Yes, sir.
Sergeant Jason Shepard had a security courthouse.
Thank you, Shep. Is anybody else, would anybody else like to speak? Okay. We are at, I didn't get who made the motion, I'm sorry. Commissioner Bayes, Amy, who was the second? Canard, thank you. Board, is there any further comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
I think I'm on the losing end of this, but I would have liked to seen it move only because Pine Ridge has been very respectful when they're sending in their information. I don't have fear of that. The PDC meeting was not, they don't have security. Everyone behaved, and I know that they all want a chance to come up and say what they need to say. Um, so I don't know if it's too late. I mean, if we could look at fairgrounds, I know they've done that in past years. I know, uh, Sergeant Shepard's cringing when I say they could use the wands. And I trust, if you say the college is a logistical nightmare, you have the experience and I appreciate that and I believe you. I don't know if there's another option, but, um, however we do it, if it is here, I wanna make sure that anybody from the public gets a chance to come in here and say what they need to say. I don't know how we're gonna work that because if people are filling the room, they're not gonna wanna leave. And I don't know how, um, Jason, you're gonna have to get with the fire marshal, with Chief Stevens. We're gonna have to do something, um, I don't know. Maybe there's X amount of people that we, that don't fill, that are constantly rotating in and out. You already have an idea. That's awesome.
Uh, what, Commissioner Finnegan, I actually am gonna bring that up on my, I have an idea of how to accomplish that on, on Commissioner comments. But I'd love to hear Shep's idea.
So, so the only other thing that I, I could possibly think of, and I would have to get permission from judicial, is to possibly use a courtroom, but then I'm, you're, you're, I'm pulling more bailiffs. So now you're looking at overtime for my people, um, which it is what it is. I'll do whatever helps benefit everybody. But the only, if it's gonna be the five oh one, then we'd have to have a courtroom. But then, like I said, you, you're just talking more people than I gotta have stay, um, for the five oh ones.
Sergeant, are you able, since it's five oh one, to put them out on all the chairs in the lobby section also? Can they fill the lobby?
I don't know what TVs you're gonna have.
Technology is amazing.
Well, it is. I got four little computers out there that has no sound that you guys can, that people can watch. And if you've come in, if you've noticed, I've put a monitor out there for my people so they're able to watch the meetings and hear the meetings to, uh, make sure everything is safe in here without actually having a deputy inside here because we still have other business, just like tonight, we have teen court going at the same, same time as we have five oh one. And it lasts till seven thirty or eight o'clock at night. So you're also gonna have kids in here utilizing a courtroom with a judge and other entities within the facility. So I know that you would like to have everybody speak. But again, I don't see where it's any different than any of the other communities that we've had these meetings for. So first come, first served. That's just my opinion. I would love to have them all talk. I can speak to judicial about a courtroom, but that's a maybe.
Everybody will have their, everybody has the right to speak.
Absolutely.
So it's not gonna be first come, first served. And I believe that the, the, the bandwidth we have in staff, and I'm gonna tell you right now, I could run a speaker. Done it for thirty years. So there, there are things that are already being discussed because number one is safety. So I don't, I think this is, uh, there's no reason to get in the weeds for this because I have complete, complete faith in staff.
We're gonna look at, we're gonna look at any, all human possibly. We're gonna look at third parties if we need to contract out with TVs and things. We're, we're already working on it to try to get the best solution we can.
I just ask that everybody keeps me in the loop.
Absolutely.
Thank you, yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Um, Commissioner Finnegan, did you have?
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Um, county attorney Denise Lynn.
Uh, you, uh, you stated it's no different than any other. Um, the board isn't aware of this yet, but there has been a party, a party intervenor application that's been filed. So these proceedings are going to be, uh, much more structured than you usually see, and it will be more like a courtroom if the board sees fit to accept the application of the intervenor. So there are going to be people that have to be in this room all the time if, if the board sees fit to do that. So it, it has the potential of being very different from what you normally see.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and tell you my idea.
Yes, ma'am.
The internet, we should have cards if you wanna speak filled out. The clerk can call the people. I don't know what I was gonna discuss with what we need to get that into our policy because once you speak, there won't be confusion of people trying to race in here when it's full and the fire marshal says no. There'll be people on deck. I see it at, I see it at almost every county commission meeting I watch, uh, with, from different counties. It's a very, they can wave in opposition. Some people don't like to speak and they can, they can have a card and the clerk will read it out or the chair reads it out, their name and they're, they're opposed or they're for. There, there are things to make it easier and more, um, organized and we no longer have to be in the dark ages. Technology is an amazing thing.
It is, you're right.
So, um, that's, that was gonna be my idea and, uh, I was just gonna ask staff and Denise to, how do we get that policy in? Uh, one person actually said that our internet is, the, the website isn't, it says you can fill out a card, but you can't, so we have to get on that. And I think hopefully October's enough time to get all these bugs worked out because it's important and everybody has the right to be heard.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you, sir.
You're more than welcome. Thank you again.
Anything else?
I would just like to say I love your idea and safety first and everybody gets to speak.
Yes. And, and I do wanna say something, uh, Commissioner Finnegan, the reason why this came up. There was one board member that was threatened and the applicant in the parking lot was, um, kind of accosted.
Uh-huh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, so that's what pushed, uh, you know, me to say, okay, what do we gotta do? And I was so thankful for Shep saying that because, like I said, not worried about us. I'm worried about, the emotions are high and there's a lot going on. You've already spoken, Steve, so thank you. Nope, nope, nope. Obey the rules, Steve. You're still talking.
The officer to come back up too.
You're, no, he's an officer, Steve. Thank you. Please be respectful, so please stop talking.
Respectful, but I was just gonna make a suggestion.
Okay, go after the meeting. I would be happy to hear your suggestion, but thank you, sir. Thank you. We have to keep order in this or it will go, I was gonna say something that isn't appropriate. Anyway, so we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. We've done public comment. We've done board discussion. Is there anybody, would anybody else like to say anything? Okay, seeing that none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. That passes five zero. Staff, start getting to it today. Thank you. G three, Wright Rutter FBO lease extension. Mr. Howard?
Yes, staff is recommending, uh, approval for the chairman execute a five-year extension. I've had some, a lot of discussions over the last couple of weeks with Wright Rutter, even as of last night. Uh, so I'm looking forward to strengthening that relationship, also securing, I told him that five million dollars. We wanna see all that money invested, uh, in this county. Um, so we're asking approval, uh, to do that. Also, uh, he has accepted the insurance requirements as proposed. All that would actually, you know, go back to the county attorney for review and have the chairman execute this. Time is of the essence uh, because this expires August thirty-first, so we, uh, recommend approval, um, as stated.
Thank you. Um, I am gonna support this. I was the only one not here. Am I the only one that can make the motion? Is it, if you voted, who can make a motion?
Anybody who was in the affirmative, anybody who was on the prevailing side of the motion.
And this, and this is a five year instead of two, so does that mean?
Anybody except for Commissioner Canard and yourself.
Well, I can do anything because I wasn't here, right?
You weren't on the prevailing side of the motion. So one of the other three.
Okay, so I do support this. I appreciate the time. I think that we got caught in the weeds in this and, um, I hate to give, uh, him credit, but I, I would have been with Commissioner Canard on this. I think it, it sends a bad signal and I appreciate it. I do appreciate Commissioner Bayes throwing that out there. But unfortunately, there were just four people here and, um, you were missing me. So that being said.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to approve item G three.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bayes, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment? Heiko. Hello.
Good afternoon, Madam, uh, Chairperson. Welcome back.
Thank you.
And for the record, I like to give a lot of credit to Commissioner Canard.
Oh, please don't.
No, you can go ahead.
Then we, we have a, we're on a schedule. Come on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, uh, my name is Heiko Kalmbach, resident of Pine Ridge and chairman of the Aviation Advisory Board. Um, as I'm sure you know, uh, Mr. Chan came to us at our monthly meeting, August tenth, to, uh, to plead his case and let us know what, what was going on. And, uh, based on the information we received, uh, the, the, uh, the Aviation Advisory Board unanimously, uh, unanimously moved to provide support for, for the five-year lease. And, uh, I've been asked to, uh, I was asked to write a letter, draft a letter to, to the five of you. And if it's okay, I'd like to read that into the record for the public, uh, public consumption. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, at the regularly scheduled meeting of the Citrus County Aviation Advisory Board on August tenth, two thousand twenty-three, the board heard from Andy Chan, the CEO of Wright Rutter Aviation, regarding his concerns about the Wright Rutter Aviation's pending lease renewal at the Inverness Airport. Based upon the information provided by Mr. Chan, the board voted unanimously to present the following recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. The Aviation Advisory Board recommends that the county commission review the Inverness Airport lease in a, renew the Inverness Airport lease in accordance with the agreements reached in two thousand and seven and documented in the current lease agreement. It is the vision of the Aviation Advisory Board that we have two thriving airports, each offering a myriad of, uh, aviation services. Specific to the issue at hand is the need to maintain a high level of activity at the Inverness Airport in order to encourage investment in the businesses we hope will come to the aviation business park. Relationship between the county and each of its fixed base operators must be built on mutual trust and transparency, fostered by a well-written lease agreement with each of its FBOs. To this end, we encourage the county commission and its staff to have frequent, direct communications with the managements of each FBO on all matters of concern, speaking, seeking speedy resolution on any outstanding issue. As it stands, each respective FBO's lease agreement provides the FBO a level of business certainty with its provision for a five-year lease renewal and provides a county a measure of certainty with its provisions of actions that can be taken should the lessy not, uh, meet its obligations in the agreement. So bottom line, um, it's, it's our feeling that Wright Rutter has brought a significant improvement in the level of services at the Inverness Airport and, uh, has very, very much benefited the county with all the money that's been brought in, all the business that's been brought in. And at the same time, we feel as though any issues, which we don't need to repeat here, they've been talked about ad nauseam, can easily be addressed by this commission and by staff, both in private meetings and as necessary through the proper process. Thank you very much.
Captain, I just wanna, do you, I thought I heard you say two thousand and seven. Did you mean two thousand and seventeen?
Seventeen is what I meant. I, my apologies if I missed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please. Captain, Captain, fill out a green card, please.
Madam Chair, it's indeed good to see you back. There is a synergy here when you're at the helm. Uh, although they did well when you were gone. I'm sure you saw.
They didn't, they didn't miss my main spirit.
No, you're, you, um, you're a blessing to this community and to this board. But Josh Winton, President and CEO of the Citrus County Chamber of Commerce, I'm just up here to say thank you. I know that, um, you know, there was some back and forth. Um, but this is what it's supposed to look like when. that, um, you know, there was some back and forth, um, but this is what it's supposed to look like when y'all are charged with getting the best deal that you thank for your constituents. And, uh, Mr. Howard's to be applauded. Um, he jumped in there with Andy. Um, and it looks like y'all are gonna have a deal and, and we really appreciate it. And we want to continue to partner and get more, more of that money and that we've been getting the last few years. So we're excited. Um, it feels like a new day out there at the airport and, um, just up here to say thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Andy Chan with Wright Rutter Aviation. On behalf of the families that we employ and all of our team members, we thank each and every one of you for your service to the community and your position as commissioners. We also truly appreciate all the homework that you guys do put in, uh, to support members of the community and to support the businesses of this community so that we are able to give back, uh, in the variety of ways that we do. We're very, uh, excited about the last five years and everything that we and our team have accomplished, and we truly look forward to the next five years and beyond. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to speak on item G three? Seeing none. Is there any further board comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Davis.
Mr. Chan, it might, um, surprise you to hear that I've actually long been a fan of what you are building at Inverness Airport. And I am going to lead off with a, an apology because I was acting chair at the time. This was not on our agenda for a voting item. And you may recall, I asked, could we legally vote on this? And I could have shaped the track in front of the train a little better, shall we say. I also believe you owe, owe three of us an apology for throwing us under the bus and then backing up repeatedly. And all of this, just as a lesson, because I too was once your age and building a company in a small town. All you had to do is reach out. All you had to do was reach out. There are things that I am still remain concerned about that could have, that do not need to be aired publicly. And we could have done that privately and we would have gotten to the exact same spot without you having to do a lot of relationship rebuilding. I continue to be very supportive of what you're building. I meant it when I said that I flew in and out of Inverness since I was sixteen years old, a whopping forty years ago. And even for a time, my father, um, had Williston and Inverness as well, and it was just too much for him to have three locations. So he pulled back to Crystal River. And I am overjoyed that Inverness is no longer dead. And we have great future ahead of us and I sincerely hope that we can all move past this. And, um, I just, you made a couple of bad decisions lately and I really hope that you're gonna move forward with much better judgment. And I'm always at the other end of a phone. Thank you, Chair.
Board, is there any other comments? Well, um, Mr. Chan, I do apologize for anything that, that I can't, that has been said that could have damaged your reputation, but let's just move forward and be good partners together and never repeat the mistakes that we have, have, we have done. So thank you, sir, and, uh, keep up the good work. Okay, so, um, there's no further board comments. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Thank you. It passes five zero. Congratulations. G four, Florida Department of Emergency Management, Management, FMA and BRIC provides staff approval to submit the notice of interest form to the Florida Department of Emergency Management via email.
Motion to approve G four.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. I'm looking for a second. Thank you, Commissioner Finnegan. Is there any public comment on G four? Seeing none. Is there any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Passes five zero. Okay, Advisory Board announcements and appointments. I one, Water and Wastewater Authority. This is an announcement only. There will be no vote. But we announced the resignation of William Elbozman and Robert Bal, Baldwin from the Water and Wastewater Authority Board, and we have to announce that there are two vacancy and the taking of the applications for terms that will expire on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. And one vacancy for alternate member and taking the applications for a term that will expire on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Deadlines for the applications is September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three with nominations and appointments to occur at the October tenth Board of County Commission regular meeting right here. Okay, next is I two, Tourist Development Council nomination and appointment of two board members.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that we, do you want both at the same time or one individual?
Um, I, I would do, um, both, please. And then let's see what the board.
Okay, I make a motion that, uh, we appoint Michael Max Schulman for the interest in tourist development and Luanne Jacobs Willcut for the, um, tourist accommodation. And, thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion for Max Schulman to be, um, he is an individual that demonstrated, um, demonstrating an interest in tourist development and a nomination for Luanne Jacobs Willcut, which is the owner and operator of tourist accommodation in the county, subject to the TDT.
Madam Chair.
Um, I have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Kennard. And Commissioner Bayes.
I would also like to put, um, Sandy Levin on for a nomination to be considered as well.
Okay.
Oh.
We have a motion for these two, if that.
Well, generally you put them out there for, okay, and then you discuss them.
Madam Chair. Yes, ma'am.
Um, I actually asked staff, I mean, there's some names that I recognize, um, but I asked about who actually has demonstrated an interest in tourist development that's not an operator? Who actually has come to the meetings for some time? And the name I was given was Michael O'Connell. So that would be the person that.
You would like to nominate?
Yes, just from me asking, like, you know, they all look like great applicants on paper. So I went to staff and said, who, who actually shows an interest and comes to these meetings? And that was the name I was given.
Thank you. And do you have a nomination for the individual that is in the tourist accommodations in Citrus County?
Um, I like them all, but I'll say Jesse Wright.
Okay, so we have a lot of names out there.
Um, Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I may, um, explain my reasoning on this. So we have an ongoing issue that we keep discussing that we want to move past just manatees and scalping. And we also want to have more involvement from the east side of the county. So by my count, we have four, taking, um, Dr. Desai and myself out of it. Because Dr. Desai has accommodation on both sides of the county. That leaves us with four representing the west coast and, um, only one, Jackie Hupner from the east side of the county. So I was really torn. I, um, to be honest, uh, between Schulman and Levin, uh, I was like, oh, I wish we could do both. Okay, because Levin has the arts portion. She's also a member of the Ramblers of Citrus County group, et cetera. However, on the tiebreaker between the two of them, Schulman has been at every single TDC meeting. And additionally, because the reason I put him, um, well above Mike O'Connell is because Schulman is deeply into all the things that are not manatee and not scalping. He has on his own written three guidebooks, which he, are you working on a fourth, I think? Um, for horse trails, but he's written, uh, guidebooks on hiking, kayaking and biking in Citrus County and provided all of the commissioners during the strategic planning process with copies of those. So he is deeply, deeply embedded and he comes to the TDC meetings and offers really great constructive ideas as to how to push us past just manatees and scalping. So for that reason, he edged out. Um, you know, Levin is obviously, I don't know, don't know her personally as well as I know Max, but, um, you know, from a tiebreaker standpoint, Schulman is, um, in the meetings every single time, every month. Um, I was a little heartbroken about, um, not only Levin, but Susan Schiff, because I think she's creative, enthusiastic, successful tourism professional. But again, she's on the west side of the county. Same thing with Jesse Wright with Florida Cracker. That was a heartbreaker. Um, Joel from Crystal Manatee, um, would have been great. Again, we're just so lopsided to the west side. I do know Luanne personally and, um, she was actually a city councilwoman at a city the same size as Citrus County. So she's, uh, sharp as a tack in business meetings and I, I think she would make a fine candidate. We were overrun, in short, we were overrun with really good candidates for this round. So that's, that's my pitch.
Thank you. Um. Commissioner Kennard, did you?
Uh, Commissioner Davis summed it up. There's, uh, there are so many qualified applicants here. Uh, three, three of them, uh, uh, I know, uh, I know personally. Um, but as the great point that she made, um, two of them are from the west side of the county and.
East side.
Uh, no, they're from the west side. The, the other one that I, that I know personally is from the east side.
I'm so sorry.
No, you just tuned me out. Anyway, great applicants. Hate to, to, um, uh, not vote for, uh, a handful of them, you know, but we all only got two spots this time. And so that was why I, uh, I seconded the motion, uh, for Max and, uh, and Luanne.
Thank you. Commissioner Bayes?
I love Max. Um, and you know, Max was my other pick, but I wanted to put, um, Mrs. Levin out there. You know, she's lived on both sides of the county. She's been, um, a very active participant in multiple civic organizations, uh, specifically here with downtown Inverness. Uh, I don't think we can go wrong with either one. As everybody has mentioned, all of them, but you know, and then, um, I totally support Luanne. Um, I think they've done a wonderful job. They've owned, you know, a couple of businesses here in the county and employ a lot of people. So there's a motion on the floor and a second, and I will go along with it.
Madam Chair, I would just.
Yeah, uh, you've explained everything well. I'm, I don't know if anyone's here to present themselves, but I'm, I'm good with it. And I think you're right about the other side of the county.
I'll take it. Um, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say that, um, I would absolutely love for, um, Sandy Levin to be a board member who's not a board member and come and participate because I I'm a big fan of the arts element of this and I would love to hear from her on, in board meetings.
Thank you. Um, I will support your nominations. Um, the only thing I would say is, you know, um, Max Levin is been in the Citrus County for ten years. Sandy, I mean, Max Schulman's been ten years in the county. He, staff did tell me he attends the meetings. That was important to me and, um, Sandy, twenty-three years in the county. Uh, the rest are one year, two year. Um, you know, that, that's always important, how long you've lived in the county. Suzie Schiff was another one. But I am gonna support your, um, your not, your, uh, nomination. So, um.
Thank you, Chair.
There you go. So any public comment? And if you have put your name in the hat and you would like to speak, come forward. Anybody? Going once, going twice. Okay, we'll close that. So board, any further discussion? Hearing none. So let's go one by one. A, the individual who demonstrates an interest in tourism, nominated Max Schulman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Passes five zero. Chair.
That motion was made together.
Okay, uh, it's, okay, I'm still putting it together. I'm just being very, very succinct in what's said.
Okay, so we would want to rescind, rescind them and do them separately if you want them.
Okay, so then all in fa, how about I take that back then? Can we rewind?
That sounds great.
Okay, so all in favor of the nominations of Max Schulman and Luanne Jacobs Willcut, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay, that passes five zero. I was just trying to be, give you details, lady. Okay, thank you. Okay, committee reports. We'll start with Commissioner Diana Finnegan.
Um, talked to, uh, Rusty at Career Source, and I'm sure it was shocking when you saw fit to put me on the board and I came in like a hurricane and wanted more people for Citrus County and wanted more benefits to our businesses and connecting them to appropriate people. And they're doing it. So they're, uh, the application should be out now. They're looking for someone to be a business liaison and house them in Citrus County. So I find that to be a great success that I'm very proud of. Um, and if anyone out there wants that position, go look it up and apply. So this will, um, let our businesses know about the programs that they offer, try to get interns in the workplace, try to connect the people looking for jobs with our local businesses here because Career Source is citrus, Levy and Marion. And I thought that Marion got all of the attention and I wanted, uh, the focus to be more on citrus. So they're working on that.
Thank you. And I'm glad to hear that. I was on that board for two years and I was on it during COVID, which was very, I was thankful for Rusty, but I just felt with your background and the business owner that that would be a perfect fit. And I'm glad to see that you're doing something and getting it done. Thank you so much. Okay, Commissioner Kennard.
Nothing.
Nothing. Okay, Commissioner Bayes. Commissioner Davis?
I'm pretty sure, given the night we're about to have, you guys wish I didn't have anything, but these are too important to skip. Um, Tourist Development Council, Research Data Services, we got our annual report from them, um, calendar year two thousand twenty-two. We had twenty-seven point two million dollars, um, in state and local sales tax at six percent. Let's do the math on what the extra cent would be paid by tourism. That equates to four hundred and seventeen dollars per Citrus County household. As someone said in Sound Off, I love Sound Off. Um, I never see that check in the mail and it's like, well, that's because your taxes are a little bit, or four hundred and seventeen dollars less than they would be. Because that helps pay for things around here. First, here is the most interesting thing that I am quite encouraged by. Everybody's heard in the news that tourism is quote unquote softening a little bit in Florida as a whole, as well as Citrus County. First quarter of two thousand twenty-three, year over year, so this is compared to first quarter of twenty-two, we had a decrease of one point three percent in visitors down to a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred. However, oh, and a decrease in, of occupancy rate in hotels of three point six percent. However, expenditures are up five point zero percent to sixty-two point three million and a five point zero percent estimated economic impact to hundred and three point eight. Some of that I'm sure can be explained away by inflation. However, some of that inflation was already in place last year. So I am hoping that that's showing a trend line of a little less traffic, spending more money, which is, um, in fitting with the direction that I think we all would like to go. Um, had a heck of a meeting. Uh, Aaron's gonna have to have a backpack for the giant agenda for the medical examiner yesterday. We are budgeting for twenty-nine million dollars. We are fearing thirty-six million dollars for the new morgue. Marion County will bond it and, uh, will advance the land purchase amount to be restored when the bond is, is complete. All of this will happen, transpire in fiscal year, this coming fiscal year, twenty-three, twenty-four. We expect occupancy fall of two thousand twenty-seven. We're looking at ten acres more or less near Leesburg, central to Citrus, Hernando, Marion, Sumter Lake and Por Seminole, not really central to them, but they're the extra ones. Um, here's the really good news for this board. We approved population share, which means that we are paying, um, there's four, four other ways that we could count what our share is with the other five counties. The other ones would have cost us more money. So we are sticking with population share as being, um, what we go by. That will float as the populations change. We're looking at bond rates or, or bonding amounts of ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five and thirty. The ME board has already declined to go twenty-five and thirty. So, uh, if we hit twenty-nine million, we're looking at an annual share of somewhere between a hundred and eighty. So if we hit 29 million, we're looking at an annual share of somewhere between 187,000 to 305,000 per year. That's a 20 and 10-year bond rate. Sorry for the speed read, but we got to go.
Thank you. And that's it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing to report for committee. I'm looking forward to get back to my boards. Now, board members, do you have anything you would like to discuss? Commissioner Finnegan? Commissioner Kennard?
Nothing.
Commissioner Bayes?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Davis, I see something on the agenda.
We, we handled that during open of the public, so we're good to go.
Very good. And I'm just going to reiterate that I would like to see us get cards that people could fill out and we could get an order to how people come up to speak. I hate watch, seeing a, a line on the wall and them having to stand. Some people are elderly. I've seen people stand against that wall with a cane, and if we could get the clerk to be able to call and say, get on deck, you're up, and I think it would be comfortable for people, so I'd like to, to really visit that, and we could start tomorrow if you'd like.
We started yesterday.
Oh, very good, thank you. Okay, so County Attorney Denise Lynn.
I have nothing, thank you.
Very good. And Mr. Howard, do you have anything?
Nothing, welcome back.
Oh, thank you. Open to the public at this time. Again, if you would like to come forward and speak on anything, please step forward. You will have three minutes. Fill out a green card, give me your name and where you're from, and please address all comments to the chairman.
It's Rocky Hensley.
Hi, Rocky.
Inverness, Florida. Just real quick, Livestream, probably it's been almost five, maybe six years ago, Livestream was looking for somebody to serve on their board of directors out of Plesburg, their main office over there. And I applied and was accepted and served on that board for a few months until I just couldn't make the trips. All the board meetings were in Leesburg, business. Anyway, I had to step down. Basically, what I'm saying is, is just with what, all that is going on and to keep communication, maybe keep Citrus County in our best interest, is if there's still the possibility to have someone come forward, whether it's a commissioner, because y'all serve on various boards and things, but probably a conflict, but find someone, if they did have an opening to serve on that board, to be able to stay on top of what's going on at their meetings, as well as what our wishes are for Citrus County. So, hold on a sec. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak at this time for open to the public? Seeing none, and to close, open to the public. We have upcoming meetings, September 12th at 1:00 PM. It says it's at the College of Central Florida.
We're going to change that after.
Okay, it just says it's a regular meeting, you were going to do the whole regular meeting there.
Correct.
Okay, so that's not true. September 26th, right here in this room at 1:00 PM. October 10th, 1:00 PM, right here, we have upcoming workshops, tentative budget hearing Thursday, September 7th, 2023, at 5:01 here in this room. Final budget hearing Tuesday, September 26th, 2023, at 5:01. Citrus Elected Leadership Summit, Tuesday, October 3rd, at 9:00 AM with the Clutchy Technical College. We will have a public hearing today at 5:01 regarding CPA slash AA slash PUD 22-13, Stillwell slash Fish Creek Glamp Ground. So right now, we will recess until 5:01. Thank you.